Good evening and welcome to the 2023-24 Budget Presentation Budget Hearing. As we build the budget, as we present the budget, we always focus on the district vision, mission, and goals, which is having all of our students' needs in mind, as well as having our communities' needs financially in mind. So tonight's agenda is the 2023 Budget Proposal, I'm sorry, 2023-24 Budget Proposal, Proposition Number Two, Board of Educational Election, Albany Public Library Budget Proposal, Additional Voting Information, and our upcoming budget calendar. As we develop the budget, our goals were to help and keep supporting our students for academic and social emotional needs, as what we revealed from the pandemic, strategically plan in a fiscally responsible manner for continued support for our students, and to minimize the tax impact on our residents. Within the budget, we still have our full day pre-K in all twelve of our elementary schools and our twelve community school locations. We have our three magnet elementary schools and expanding dual-language program. We have our band, chorus, orchestra, starting in the third grade. We also have our community schools initiatives in Arbor Hill, Clement, Giffen, Myers, North Albany, Schaller, Sheridan Prep, and Toast. We also have additional social emotional supports, as in behavior specialists, psychologists, and social workers, instructional intervention positions to support and accelerate learning for math reading and ELA. We have our marching Falcons Band and Color Guard, including Winter Guard and indoor percussion ensemble. We have our sixty-three athletic teams, as well as our intramural programs for students in grades seven through twelve. Also in our high school, we have our AP, our IB, University in the High School, CTE Pathways, our avid college and career readiness programs at the high school. We have our theater ensemble, and as always, we try to be culturally relevant in our teaching and learning practices. Within a new budget, we have seventy-three positions district-wide that were formerly funded by the American Rescue Plan, or ARP, moving over into a general fund. We also have twenty-one point one new FTE positions, which include seven and a half new seventh-grade teachers, or new teaching positions at the North Albany Middle School to help the feeder program, three teaching positions at the high school for cosmetology, health sciences, and social studies, helps support technology. We have three district-wide computer technicians, a data engineer, and a technical support leader. We've also added two assistant directors in pre-kindergarten and in transportation. We've also added one dual-language second-grade teacher to help continue in the commitment to double the program size. In this slide here, we have our expenditures and some of the categories, or some of the main categories of expenditures, as you see from twenty-twenty-one, I'm sorry, from twenty-twenty to twenty-one budget through the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four budgets. On this slide, it's a little bit more of the headers or the groupings of our expenditures. So the upcoming proposed budget is three hundred and seven million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. In this slide here, we have our general fund revenue, which is comprised of property taxes, state aid, local revenues, appropriate fund balances, use of money from our savings account, and additional federal aid. We are asking for a zero percent tax levy increase, so as you can see, in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we collected a hundred and twenty-two million, three hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and two dollars. That is what we're asking to collect in the upcoming year. And also in this slide, you see a significant increase in state aid, which is helps with the offset of asking for a zero percent tax levy increase. And this slide here, it's a nice chart to show that in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen, we relied on our property taxes within our budget of forty-nine percent. In this upcoming proposed budget, we are relying overall in a forty percent. This slide here is just to show you that the expenditures or expected expenditures and the revenues are equal with a zero difference and a zero percent tax levy increase, which means essentially that if, unless the home set and non-home set ratio changes, or your home has been reassessed, your taxes should be relatively the same as it was this year. This slide here is just a nice comparison to show from two thousand and fourteen, fifteen through the upcoming proposed budget. This would be the third time that we ask for a zero percent tax levy increase, and over that time, it was an average of point nine percent of a tax levy increase. The slide here is essentially showing that since there's no change in the property tax levy that we're asking for, again, as long as your house has not been reassessed or any drastic changes in the home set and non-home set ratio, the taxes for you individually should be the same. If the budget is not approved in the upcoming vote on May sixteenth, we have three different options. One is to put up the same proposal for another vote. We could present a revised budget for voter consideration, or we could adopt a contingency budget. With a contingency budget, we would have to reduce the budget by one point three million dollars, which would require us as a district to ask our community groups that use the facilities to pay for the school use. We would probably, we would make cuts to specific areas, including personnel or staffing, and it would prohibit us from spending on student supplies. Proposition number two is the capital project reserve, or the use of the capital project reserve. Currently, we are asking to utilize nine million dollars as the capital project reserves that we have to increase the overall costs of the Albany High School renovation project to a hundred and eighty-eight million, nine hundred thousand. You'll see in the upcoming slide how escalation costs in the last few years has drove up the price of the capital project. This additional nine million dollars would have no impact on the taxpayer as it is coming from our savings account. On this slide here, the capital project team utilized a ten percent average on the left-hand side prior to the capital project being approved as what the escalating cost would be going forward, but as you can see on the right-hand side, the numbers has, have drastically increased to a total of thirty-three percent or thirty-eight percent with the compound, so it's a twenty-three to a twenty-eight percent difference than what was expected prior to the project. For an example, a dozen eggs in two thousand and sixteen, you can see that a dozen eggs was two dollars and ninety-two cents. To this year, it's four dollars and twenty-one cents. The Board of Educational Election, we have two board members that will be on the ballot for reelection. They are running unopposed. It's Vice President Anne Savage and Board Member Damaris Mann. Also on the ballot for Proposition Number Three is the Albany Public Library Budget. The budget is seven million, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred, ten thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, and there are no library board trustee positions up for election this year. For more information, please visit the albanypubliclibrary.org website, or call Stephanie Simon at five one eight, seven zero eight, three nine one two. There is one change for the upcoming vote. In the first ward, the location has changed to the New Hope Church at three thirty-four Second Ave. This is a different location that was traditionally used, which would have been the city parks and recreation, but as we use the snow days, our students are coming in for the Student Day on May sixteenth, so this location had to change, and there's no COVID-nineteen SMT option this year. For more information or to find your polling place, please visit albanyschools.org/vote. So upcoming calendar, today is May the fourth. We have our budget hearing. May ninth, we have a upcoming presentation at the Normanskill Neighborhood Association. The tenth, we have a virtual community budget presentation, and of course, May sixteenth is the actual budget vote and the Board of Educational Election. For more information on the budget proposal, also to see our budget newsletter, which should have been delivered to your homes by now, if not, they should be within a day or two, please visit albanyschools.org/budget. And that concludes our budget presentation for tonight.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Smith, and I'm the President of the City School District of Albany's Board of Education, and on behalf of the Board, I'll welcome you to our meeting. I'm joined tonight by Member Hassan El-Menyawi, Member Ellen Crecci, our Board Secretary, Dr. Shadar Shatur, our Board Vice President, Anne Savage, Member Tabitha Wilson, and Member Damaris Mann. I'm also happy to introduce you two, if you haven't met her. I guess I'm gonna have to stop saying that, right, Ms. Gale, because you're old hat now. Ms. Jenna Rae Gale is our Board Clerk, and we are excited to have her. And we have also interim Superintendent John Yagelski with us, of course, our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance, Joseph Karas, and Mr. Honeywell, who is our District Attorney, Council, District Attorney, our District Council. And also with us is Mr. Ron Lesko, our Director of Communications and Operations, and I believe Mr. Kent Baker is doing his work there behind the screens with all the technology, and he was, is with the, oh my goodness, Assistant Superintendent for Data Assessment?
Accountability.
Accountability, Technology Innovation? Did I get it all? Okay, alrighty, but we're glad to see him, and Bobby, I always have to give a shout-out to you two, thank you. I also believe Mrs. Karen Bechtel, our Assistant Director of Curriculum and Instruction, is also in the house, and we also have other cabinet members who will be on later. So thank you all for being here. Tonight, the meeting is being livestreamed, and the instructions to do, view those materials are available at albanyschools.org/boe, if you'd like to share those with anyone. All the slides will be shown here in this room, as well as on the virtual screens, and again, you can access this material at albanyschools.org/boe. As usual, we'll talk in the Superintendent's Report about any COVID-related matters or changes, but right now, the guidance is still pretty clear that we're just all to exercise, you know, space if we're sick, stay home if we're sick, hand washing is always a good thing whether you're sick or not, so we just want to encourage everyone to do all of those things. And with that introduction, I invite those of you who choose to join us as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, one nation, one God, and liberty and justice for all. Thank you. In addition to the Pledge of Allegiance, we always focus our meeting by restating the mission of the City School District of Albany, which is to work in partnership with our diverse community to engage every learner in a robust educational program designed to provide the knowledge and skills necessary for success. And I really want to now, I'm very excited, I'm gonna turn things over to Mr. Lesko to do an introduction of sorts and go from there. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We are so pleased tonight to have a special guest with us again for our meeting. Albany High School Junior Elijah Temple earned the Gold Level Distinction in Barbering at last Friday's New York State Skills USA Tournament in Syracuse. He is the first Falcon in recent history to earn a state championship at this annual Career and Technical Education Competition, and he is now looking ahead to Nationals in Atlanta next month. I would like to welcome Albany High Barbering Instructor Jonathan Wafer to introduce Elijah and tell us more about this awesome achievement.
I'm not sure how to work, am I on? Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to address the Board tonight. My name is John Wafer, and I am the Barbering Instructor at Albany High's Abrooke and CTE Center, and I am here to announce that the Barroom Program is in its fourth year, this year, of existence, and with our very first graduating class that will compete, I mean, that will complete the program this year. The program has grown tremendously from a handful of kids our first year to nearly over a hundred kids this year. It's a full-blown course load and program from one period, the first year, till now a full-time program, with plans to build a new space within the Albany High School. The potential for more growth is extremely exciting, so I thank all of you for your efforts helping out with that. Excuse me. Despite all the challenges that we've all faced over the adversity with COVID in the last four years of education, our students are really excelling, and some of our students, most importantly, to the right of me, have been working in the industry, getting real-world experience through the barbering program, and most recently, as Ron just explained, Elijah has completed the competition in Skills USA and won first-place championship with the opportunity to go to Atlanta. So I'd like to thank the Board for honoring us tonight with this historic achievement, and I believe with your continued support, the program has the unlimited capacity to grow and be a shining example throughout the state and a program to be emulated to follow for others. So thank you very much, and now, I'm gonna turn it over for Elijah to say a couple of words.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Elijah Temple. I'm in eleventh grade, and I'm currently a part of the barbering program at Albany High School. As my teacher, Mr. John Wafer previously said, I've made history last week finishing first place for the state competition at Skills USA for barbering, and I think, I thank God first and foremost for that opportunity, not only being able to be here, but having such a good teacher like Mr. John here to the left of me. And it's really been a good experience at Skills USA. It's really told me a lot about the workplace and how to just wake up in the morning. We had to get up at six to go basically to work, to go to breakfast, start our days off, and we had to be to sleep by eleven o'clock, so it really teaches you how to be in the workforce, and I know, I'm pretty sure a lot of you experienced that as you were high positions, as you work for places, so it's really been good. And Skills USA has really taught me a lot, not only just having to go to work, but being a man, and also doing what you have to do, waking up every day in the morning and going to work, going to what you have to do in life, so that's really been good for me. And I think Skills USA and the barbering program at our school can really help out a lot of young men, just like me, not only, because I've started barbering last year, so it's really been a pleasure for me to get where I'm at, because just a couple of weeks ago, I didn't even know what Skills USA was, so it's really been a pleasure to me to do this and have the opportunity I had to now go to Nationals in Atlanta, Georgia next month, so I really thank God, and I thank all you for having us tonight, and it's really been a blessing.
And Mr. Temple there, we'd love to have a photograph with you and the Board, and I know your family is here. If you'd like to also be in the photo, we'll make all that happen. Okay, thank you, and congratulations to you, we're very excited.
You know, I just want to say something. Elijah is a fantastic athlete as well, and I've seen him on the podium when he's doing his track and field, and, you know, so when he hurt his leg and was out for the season, I was like, oh, man, you know, and then I see him on this podium, and so it's like, amazing, I mean, this is a great achievement.
Thank you. The first week of May brings with it celebratory national recognition activities for two groups of educators who are vital to the success of our students, our building administrators and our teachers. Monday marked National School Principals' Day, and the Tuesday of the first full week of May also includes Teacher Appreciation Day. While there is some debate this year about whether that means it was this past Tuesday or this Tuesday coming, which is in alignment with National Teacher Appreciation Week, there is no question about how important our teachers are for us every single day. We are grateful for the tireless commitment that our principals, assistant principals, and teachers demonstrate year-round, and honored to have this opportunity to recognize all that they do to support our students and our community. It seems appropriate at this very beautiful and colorful time of year that we have a number of talented artists who have been recognized for their work. Albany High School Senior Lavender Sanai Scott has received a five-hundred-dollar stipend from the Colony Art League, recognizing her talent and commitment as she prepares to pursue her goal of becoming an art educator. We are very excited to hear of her career plans and congratulate her on this excellent award. Five Albany High student artists recently had their work recognized at the two thousand and twenty-three Capital Region Media Arts Festival. Congratulations to Senior Emily Farrell, Juniors Anaya Erwin Chambers, Luke Gibson, and Haley Vega, and ninth grader Anya Miller. William S. Hackett Middle School eighth grader Sophia Kovachi also recently placed third in a regional middle school art show hosted by Flock Art. Well done, Sophia. We also are looking forward to celebrating our youngest student artists this weekend at the Ninth Annual City School District of Albany Elementary Art Show at the Albany Institute of History and Art. The weekend-long exhibition kicks off tomorrow evening with a reception at five PM that also will feature the Stephen and Harriet Myers Middle School Jazz Band. This year's art exhibition consists of more than two hundred and fifty artworks representing all twelve elementary art programs. It is a special opportunity for our youngest students to showcase their talents and artistic inspirations from this school year. We would like to recognize Fine Arts Instructional Supervisor Kate Wright for her leadership in organizing this annual event in partnership with the Art Institute, and all of our dedicated fine arts teachers for the excellent work they do guiding and supporting our students. We also have a save the date reminder in the Performing Arts. Students in Albany High's Blossoming Dance Program will perform in a spring dance concert in the high school auditorium on Thursday, May eighteenth, beginning at six-thirty PM. Students from our Just Dance classes and the Cinema Dance Musical Theater Club will perform works by student and professional choreographers under the direction of Teacher Amonike Akinyemi. Albany High's Advanced Orchestra students will provide live music for this event as well. And sticking with tonight's seasonal arts theme, spring concert season is in full bloom this month. Our schools have musical performances scheduled in the coming weeks to allow our talented student musicians to show off all that they have been working on over the past several months. You can find the date and time for your school's upcoming spring concert on your school page at albanyschools.org. A reminder about two great community events next week. On Tuesday, all are invited to attend the Vegetable Project's Evening in the Garden at Albany High. The Evening in the Garden is free and will be held from five-thirty to seven PM Tuesday. The garden is located at Albany High's North Main Avenue entrance. And on Saturday, May thirteenth, our cosmetology and barbering students will host Mother's Day Spa Day in Albany High's amazing new salon classroom. Spa Day will be from ten AM until one PM on May thirteenth. Spa Day is open to the community and will feature a wide range of services. For more information, you can visit Albany High's webpage at albanyschools.org/AlbanyHigh. We have a couple of calendar reminders for our families this month. Tuesday, May sixteenth, will be a full, regular day of school for all of our students. This also is the budget vote day, and you'll recall that we originally had planned a professional development day for our employees and no school for students. We want to remind everyone that we adjusted those plans back in March after using our final snow emergency day. So Tuesday, May sixteenth, will be a regular day of school for all students, and all of our schools and offices will be closed on Monday, May twenty-ninth, in observance of Memorial Day. We want to remind our families that Friday, May twenty-sixth, and Tuesday, May thirtieth, will be regular days of school for all students, since we used all of our snow emergency, uh, snow emergency, emergency days last winter, so just the traditional three-day Memorial Day weekend this year. And it is now our pleasure to welcome Principal Souleka Sanchez-Gale to highlight the great things happening at Sheridan Preparatory Academy this year.
Turn it on. Good evening, everyone. I am Souleka Sanchez-Gale. I am the very proud principal of Sheridan Preparatory Academy. With me, I have my beautiful and intelligent Assistant Principal Tina Marie Cascone, and my very hard-working interim homeschool coordinator Lloyd Johnson III, who I may, who I might add is an Albany High graduate. Supposed to give a sign. Well, the district mission, the district vision mission, oh, oh, would you like me to read these? Oh, okay. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I was talking about the district stuff. We're moving on to our vision, all right. So, so our school vision, mission, and values are, so our mission is Sheridan Preparatory Academy believes that all teachers, students, and family members will learn all we can, believe that we can do our best and strive to achieve our full potential, because that's the Sheridan Prep way. Our vision is to be the great, is to be the gateway to the future of our students' greatness. And then, our actual goal is to provide all of our students with positive and enriching learning experiences where they feel safe, respected, and seen, and that they're great, that they're actually being provided with grade-level opportunities so that they can achieve our school-state standards. And so for the next one, I think we go into our demographics. Our school is about fifty-five percent black students. We have about twenty-one, almost twenty-two percent Latinos. We, you can see, almost nine percent are Asian students. We are about eight percent at multiracial, and we are about six percent white students. One of the fascinating things about Sheridan Prep is that I think our school has been becoming more and more diverse throughout my tenure at Sheridan Prep. It's exciting. I think if anyone goes down Central Avenue, it is a very multicultural space and place in the city of Albany. in the city of Albany, and our school certainly reflects the changing cultural influences and folks that are coming to our city. And so then I think next, we had a couple of other additional demographics that were not racial. We had, I'm sorry, I don't have the presentation, so I'm going off of memory. So we had a demographic for the number of students with disabilities in our building, and I want to say we are roughly around 17%, I believe is what it was. Oh, it's 19%. Our English-language learners are 17%, our economically disadvantaged are 76%. And one thing that I did want to note about Sheridan Preparatory Academy that might be unique to the entire district is that we have about 10% of our students who have McKinney-Vento status. And that is a significant, I think, population considering the size of our school. So our highlights in our building, number one, is we have a weekly common planning time with our instructional coaches, which may feel like it's a little bit different, not a little bit, it's something that is the same in every building, but the way it's different at Sheridan Prep is that it is coupled with an enrichment hour. And so our teachers and our coaches have an hour a week that's protected. Our coaches meet with a grade level every single day. They rotate with the grade levels. And what has happened during that common planning time, which is really a great thing and a source of pride for all of us, is that we have evolved our coaching cycles. And so our coaches have gone away from simply just, you know, being models of good instruction. So now we have had like an I do, we do, you do, and so our coaches have been absolutely doing the coaching piece in terms of modeling, but also now doing a co-teach where they teach with the teachers, and then also do a feedback loop where they see the teachers taking on the really good practices that our coaches have now been working so hard with them on. And so that practice has now evolved into our teachers really wanting to see each other teach. And when you walk into Sheridan Prep, I think most people will say it feels like a warm and inviting place. What is really exciting is that it also has almost like a college feel because we have teachers who are willing to learn from each other and who are absolutely taking those steps to be vulnerable because it's not an easy thing to have a colleague watch you teach. And so I am always so proud of the bravery and the commitment that my teachers have been showing because they want to do what's best for kids. And then we have our weekly attendance reviews. This is something that we instituted a few years ago because of the simple fact that we have so many students who are labeled as chronically absent. And so in doing the weekly attendance meeting, we actually observe and look at each and every single child in the building, not just our chronically absent students. So we look at the trajectory or the trends that the students are showing on a week-to-week basis. And so maybe we have a student who actually had really good attendance, but then all of a sudden a week passes by and they had three absences, right? And now there's a cause for concern. And our old model used to be like monthly meetings, and so that child could have by the month had 10 absences, and now they're chronic, right? So the weekly meetings really help us to have this safety net of catching students before they get to that chronic label or status. And I have to say that the work that has to be done in between those meetings has been done by our interim homeschool coordinator, and so we make decisions about whether or not a home visit needs to be made, whether or not a phone call needs to be made, a letter needs to be sent, whether or not we need to find out what the barriers are. And so that I can talk a little bit more about in the next section of the presentation because there is one section specific to attendance. And then the last thing I talked a little bit about were the instructional coaching cycles when I was speaking about common planning time. And so in our common planning time, because of that targeted time, we are having, I think, really unique and purposeful coaching cycles where my coaches feel like they are imparting change in the building, but that the teachers are also really embracing the ability to change their practice for the good. All right, so attendance matters. I want to reiterate, Mr. Johnson is our interim homeschool coordinator, and he has been with us for a year and a half. And in 2021, 2022, our daily attendance rate was at 88%. And since the onboarding of Mr. Johnson, we are now at a 92% daily attendance rate.[934.22][934.22](applause) And so that requires daily phone calls, regular home visits. Mr. Johnson is good about going to houses as many times as he needs to to find a human being to speak to about certain things. He's been excellent at finding out what the barriers are. One of the things that he's done this year that I really applaud is that he's taken a survey of our students who have shown dramatic improvement from last year to this year to find out what the change is for them, why they're coming to school this year. And many of them did say a couple of things that were cute, but they also talked about our enrichment hour. They talked about having a clock now that helps to wake them up, that they're learning how to go to sleep a little earlier, and that they have good friends in the building. You could say.
He's a little shy.
Yeah, so like with that survey, a lot of the kids spoke about having friends come into Sheridan Prep because they felt safe, you know, their teachers, they loved their teachers. And for the most part, enrichment program was like big. That's a big thing for the kids, and our superstar clubs also. Yeah. You're welcome.
So you might be asking, what is enrichment? And as I said before, we use our common planning time while our teachers have an hour with the coaches. The children then have an hour of enrichment with our community partners, and some of the things that they have been doing in enrichment is that they learn the mechanics of playing basketball, they are learning some of the ins and outs of gardening, they're learning coding, they are doing artwork, financial literacy. It's a lot of stuff. They're doing a lot of things in enrichment, but we are happy to see how much they enjoy that hour. And then we can go into our chronic absenteeism rate. So our statewide MIB is right now currently, we're supposed to be at 35% having a chronic absenteeism rate. However, last year we were at a 49% rate, and we're now currently at a 40% rate. But the thing that these numbers don't share is that our students, while they're, yes, they are chronic, they're absent less days. And so my belief is that with our attendance approach, if we continue to push, and you'll see that, I think, in the next slide, our power of, the power of 10, which is the power of attendance. If we continue with that messaging, I do believe that we will very likely start seeing very great inroads into our chronic absenteeism rate because you can see how we are getting very close to that MIB in that graph. And so this is the biggest thing that we did this year, and this is called the Power of Attendance. And so we highlighted the number 10 because 10 days of, well, it starts with 10 months of school. So we said there are 10 months of school, and the kids have to be in school for the 10 months. In those 10 months, they can only miss 10 days to have good attendance. And so we tried this year to shift from 18 days absent makes you chronic to just saying 10 days or less makes you have good attendance, right? And so just to swap in that messaging, now our families are like, oh my God, 12 days absent, and we're like, phew, not chronic, right?[1166.58][1166.58](laughter) So, you know, and we're like, we'll take the 12, we'll take the 12, just don't get to 18, right? And so our families are learning a lot about that. And so that's why I think so many of our kids made such a dramatic increase in even with our students who are chronic, why the decrease in attendance. I think we've gained over 280 days of instruction from last year to this year, if you count how many days the children are now here versus were absent last year. So we do the 10, 10, and 10. It was 10 months, 10 days, and 10 years old because we want them to be ready for middle school when they leave. So that's why, that's our Power 10. It's cute. And then last but not least, the kids love our monthly incentives. And what we do, what I think might be different from others, is that we highlight monthly perfect attendance. So let's say you had a bad month of October, right? You got sick, you had a bug, okay. But then you come to school every day in November, at the end of November, you get a pencil, well, we give them trinkets. So we just go month by month. And it's always very interesting when children believe they deserve the bracelet or the dog tag or whatever. They're like, I don't think I was absent this month. And then you have to come with your dad and say, oh, maybe on this day, maybe.[1258.15][1258.15](laughter) They do, they make us check.[1261.24][1261.24](laughter) They make us check. So we love that, they love it, you know. All right, so our school highlight. I have to say that our community school model has been a difference-maker for our school. Our enrichment hour allows for the common planning time to be extended, so our teachers have that protected hour, and our students are getting an opportunity to experience different enrichment activities that they may have not otherwise experienced had they not been at our school. We are doing tremendous things to support our families and address some of the barriers for attendance. We have a laundromat, a pantry, a closet. Oh, we do the feed and read, we do books. I think that's most everything. The enrichment club, yeah. And so we try to address any of the barriers that our families have. Well, we have Northern Rivers on site, we have Whitney Young on site, we have Seela Smile also coming to our building. So a lot of the needs that our families may have, we absolutely try to address those as quickly as we can. And then our social-emotional space, I'm going to allow for Ms. Cascone to kind of speak a little bit about our social-emotional area because she is in our building the head of that, and, you know, she has done such wonderful work around our SED suite.
So just to speak to a little bit of what we're doing in our SED suite, which is social-emotional department, it's where the behavior specialists live, the psychologist, the social worker, and myself, Whitney Young Parsons is there. We also have partnered with Building Blocks, which is an outside community agency. And so I don't know whether this differs from other buildings, but, you know, following our MTSS model, not just looking at academics and behavior, we try to look at the whole child at all times, but we also meet on a weekly basis. We look at all the students. So any students that are in Tier One, they may be struggling, even if it's just due to like a BIP in the road of maybe a death in the family and maybe something that doesn't carry on all year. Our Tier Two kids that might just need a little tweak, a little support, and our Tier Three who may be moving to a different setting, but, you know, any way we can, we're trying to make sure that we're taking data and that we're usually using all of our data to drive all of our decision-making. It's really a very comprehensive model. We have done a lot to bring sensory into our building. We started with a sensory hallway, now we have sensory hallways on all of our floors. We have a calm-down room, which is just a big pillow beanbaggy space, and we're constantly looking to brainstorm of like what else we can bring to just meet all the needs of the students that we are seeing. And so as we hopefully are tailing ends out of COVID, we also have needs for students who have maybe or maybe not have any social skills coming into school, which maybe not was a problem before COVID. And so we're starting to really kind of adjust to just be prepared for every learner that comes through the door. So we're meeting their needs and also making sure that they're ready for, you know, what's ahead. And so we're trying very hard to prepare our fifth graders to understand, you know, the ever-evolving change once they leave us to go to middle school and understand how to ask for help and being able to self-regulate and understand how, you know, emotions can directly impact choices. And so I'm always just feeling very privileged that I get to work with such an amazing team that is constantly thinking about, not consequence or punitive, but how do we restore, how do we repair, how do we make our students become future leaders and so that when they walk across the high school stage, you know, they not only come back to tell us, but we know who in the community is moving as a Sheridan Prep superstar for the rest of their life. So I just hope that, you know, the board recognizes that where we work does have more barriers or different barriers than other buildings. And so I always am very thankful that our students are coming every day because the community that they're, you know, the neighborhood that they're walking through has a lot of struggles that they have to walk past, but they do it every day to come to school. So that in itself, to me, is a big ovation because those kids come, and where even some of the adults feel stressed out because they may have to drive into a neighborhood, but they're walking every day, and they are happy to be in our building, and we're just hopeful to continue to grow that.
She didn't mention something that I'm going to give her kudos to. So one of the things that is lovely to see in the SED suite is when children, so she's talking a lot about self-regulation, but what our children are getting really good at is being able to call a timeout for themselves. And when they come down and they seek their break or they seek the time, they decide how much time they need, and they'll go into her little credenza and open, and they're like, okay, I'll take the 10-minute timer, or I'll take the five-minute timer. And so I think one of the things that folks may have as a misconception about school breaks or students taking breaks is that they take these like enormously long breaks and they never get back to the classroom, right? But we have created a community and culture in our SED suite and in our school that the children are supposed to go back to the classrooms. And so even if they have that momentary lapse in judgment, that there is always an adult ready to forgive and to repair and to receive. And so I applaud Ms. Cascone for the hard work she's done to really create that culture in our building. And then with our consultant, we have been working with on-point leadership for the last few years, and one of the things that has been really rewarding about working with the same consultant who has been working with our building and goes to see our students and worked with our staff is that she has helped us expand our professional boundaries, right? And so she's always, because she knows where we've come from, she knows where we can, what our next steps need to be, what our next steps need to be, and she, one of the things we, she has an alter eagle she likes to call Lola. And if she has to Lola us, she does, right? Because now she has had this history with us, and so we're always ready to receive the honest and sometimes ugly truth about some of the things that we may need to change. And so I just feel like I have to say that because I know we've had her for a long time, and it may seem like, what is she still working on? But we started thinking about our beliefs, then from our beliefs, we moved into our planning practices. Then from our planning practices, she started challenging us about, well, what are the club rules and what's happening across this whole building? What's permissible, what's not permissible? Then it was, okay, so now what, where's the rigor in your instruction? Are you, and who's getting that instruction? And so now she's like, and how are you, the teaching staff, holding each other accountable? And so every year has been some growth in our practice on how we become a community that really is centered and focused on our students' needs, but not just their social-emotional needs, but their academic needs. Because for our district, to get to a place where equity is real, our school has to be the school that changes. We know that. Our school, our kids, have to be the ones that achieve. So we are committed to that, and we own that responsibility and, you know. So thank you for community schools.[1763.38][1763.38](laughter) So and then our last school highlight, I think, which is we're very excited about at Sheridan Prep, right, is that our school has improved accountability status from CSI to ATSI.[1775.82][1775.82](applause) And this was, yes, through the pandemic, thank you very much, we still did that.[1784.66][1784.66](laughter) Okay, so those are a little bit blurry, but I'm just showing you some actual data. And what you'll see is that within the last few years, so that might be edutalk, and so the- so the, this is from NWEA, and then the RIT score is what the students actually get as a score once they take the NWEA. And the thing about the RIT score is that a RIT is a RIT. So if I get a 150, and a 150 is kindergarten, if I'm in the fifth grade, I'm on a kindergarten level, that's what that 150 means. And what you should note is that there has been constant gains towards the mean norm RIT. And we have been making inroads of upwards, of up to more than 10 points, and if we continue in this trajectory, we will soon be at the norm. And if we accomplish that, that will be a game-changer for the City School District of Albany. So then our school highlights. Again, our teaching staff is collegial and dedicated to growing their instructional practice, and determined to create a safe environment for our students. And then Ms. Cascone spoke a little bit about our SED suite and how comprehensive that approach is. The other thing I would add is how much you include our families in all of the necessary conversations, so that we are better serving and meeting the needs, especially the emotional needs of our students. So our challenges is funding for our programs. Most of what I described to you all comes from our grant funded, our grants from having been a school in CSI status and in receivership. And changing, even though it's exciting to change from CSI to ATS.I, does mean a drop in funding for us. And so we have been using our community team, our community engagement team, to help us start considering ways to do fundraising, so that our programs can continue. I do want to take an opportunity here to highlight our community partners, because they do more than just sit on this CET team and help us try to find fundraising. Our, our community partners, much to what Ms. Cascone was mentioning about some of the difficulties and challenges that face our neighborhood, have absolutely stepped up to the plate. We have a clinic behind us that technically has an address of Central Avenue, and we technically have an address of Sheridan Avenue, and because of that, it appears that we're not as close as we are, but we definitely, we both share Sherman Street. And folks or people who are seeking treatment at this facility behind us, oftentimes we're approaching our children when they were walking to school, which made it very unsafe. And so through our community school model and through our CET, we were able to leverage a partnership with one of our community agencies, and their employees would stand on the corners throughout the street and create a safe passage for our students, so that if anybody approached our kids, that there was another grown, that there was a grown-up kind of shooing them away from our children. And so those are the kinds of partnerships that really truly make our school special, because we know that our children are absolutely capable of achieving great things. We also know that they also have incredible things to overcome in order to achieve what they need to, what they can achieve. But having partners that are ready to roll up their sleeves and find funds, find people, and do the things that we need in order to make our school the best school it can be, is really a very, very humbling experience, because we know, like, our UU friends, there's nobody better than our UU friends. They are, they're like the greatest, right? And we know that, you know, if we, even the, the folks that were helping with picking up the litter and, you know, making sure of the safe passage, we have those, those are the things that people, the kids remember. It's all of those things, right? So, you know. I love our community partners, I love our teaching staff, you know, we're a good place to be. If you've never been, you should. Should be there. I think that, oh no, I think we might be going to Student Voices next, right? That's, that's the next side. Okay, so these are our student council members, they're so cute. You have President Carmier, VP Saleh, Secretary Jorge, a member Anthony, a member Brooklyn, and our member Madison. At our school, anybody who runs for student council automatically becomes a part of the student council, so we have elected officials. But then if you were not elected and you ran, you're, you're a part of the Congress. So anybody who wants to be a part of the Congress is allowed to be a part of the Congress. And so they've been doing some really nice work. There they go. They're cute and smart. And they have a lot of agency, I will say, they are, so they have a lot of agency.
This year, our student council was then working on giving best to our community. We voted on if we were going to do a fundraiser or do something for our community, like picking up lasers.
We voted and decided we wanted to do a fundraiser. After the vote, we had to research different ways to do a fundraiser. We voted and decided that the school would have fun if we did a coin drive.
After a discussion on the rules, we did research on different charities to donate to. It was very hard to pick just one, so we decided to, to pick the three we liked and let the school decide which charity to donate to.
We picked the Ronald McDonald House, the Double H Ranch, and the Mohawk Society. Our next step is going to go to all of the classes in our school and pump them up for the coin drive.
Our city council meets every week. We are currently working on picking, we are currently working in picking, working on picking the next book for one school, one book. We have been listening to a few books and trying to pick our favorite for our school.
We are also a part of our outdoor learning area committee. We will be adding our ideas to how this space can be used for our school. As you can see, being on student council at Sheridan Prep is a lot of good work.
They, they truly believe in democracy, because they wanted to do this, they wanted to do some community service, and they voted on every single part of what they wanted to do. Do we want to do community service or fundraiser? Let's vote. Okay, so then they voted. Okay, what kind of fundraiser we want to do? Let's do some research, let's vote. Then it was, okay, what, who are we gonna donate to? Let's do some research. Oh no, we shouldn't vote, the school should vote. They are, it was just so cute to see how much they want. They are advocates for their peers, and I just, they are a cute little group of kids, and they work really hard in our school. So this is their launch of the coin drive.
Hello, Mrs. Mariela's class. My name is Carmier, and we are the student coun, we're the school student council. The student council decided to hold a coin drive. For those who don't know what a coin drive is, a coin drive is one to bring in pennies, nickels, dimes, and quarters. To fit in a jar, after two weeks, we'll pack them together, all together, and vote on the charity that change will go to.
First, the school will need to decide if it's going to follow three, four, the donation.
Ronald McDonald House, the Ronald McDonald House is, is a place for families to stay for three, while their children are in a house, in the hospital. The Ronald McDonald House in Albany is very close to two major hospitals in our area.
The Double H Ranch is a camp for children with serious illness and disabilities, who have a fund somewhere for young children that go to camp. It may be the last opportunity they have for a special time.
The Mohawk Society is an animal shelter for abandoned animals. They're strictly dogs and cats. If the animals in the shelter are not adopted, they are usually put down.
Each class will have a coin jar if you would like to donate, to go to. Each class will have a jar to put the coins in. No paper money, no play money, and no checks, only coins. After two weeks, the class with the most coins will have a party of their choice. Anyone caught trying to take the money from the jar will have consequences, but their class will be disqualified.
Thank you for that time. We can't wait to start the competition for good. With respect, the student council of Sheridan Prep.
So it was cute with, you know, helping them guide what they wanted to say. They all were in agreement that they wanted a speech and that they wanted to do it together. So they're, you know, they're a nice little group of, of children who are really doing, I think, great things and have great potential. We have equal parts third, fourth, and fifth graders that are a part of our student council. And it's interesting, because our fourth grader is the president, so normally you would expect the fifth grader to maybe to be the president, but our, the president is a fourth grader. I think that's all.
So this was really fabulous, thank you. And I see a couple of my friends, I was over for a reading hour, and I, and one, one young man of third grade, I think he's the tallest there, he was telling me about his campaign. And so I'm glad to see, I'm very happy to see him now. But I wanted to just ask you, and I'm sorry, the, the coin drive, is that, is that still going on, or is there an end date?
So we're currently in the process, because my, our student council wanted the school to vote on where we're donating the coins to. We're still collecting the votes on the donation. And then starting on Monday, we are going to have the coins. Now, they were very clear. They did not want paper money. They said, "No, we can't have paper money, who's, we're gonna have too much counting to do." No paper money. And then they were also, and I don't know which one of them was like, "And no checks." And I was just like, "Okay." Yeah, it could have, yeah, that does sound, it might have been, but it was just funny. I was like, "Okay, it'll be interesting if a pre-K kid comes with a check, but okay."
Well, I, I only want, and I know generally we don't ask you questions, but I, I just wanted to know, because I do have a jar at home, that's like years old, and it's full, and I just kind of leave it there, and I said, "Hmm, maybe I could spare half of that."
We'll take your half, we'll take your half.
Okay. But I, I'm just, I just wanted to know when that starts and when, when that needs to be turned in.
So they elected that it needs to be two weeks, because they think that with just two weeks, we will get more coins, because then the kids will feel an urgency.
All right.
So that was, you know, I, one of, one of them suggested the month of March, and his suggestion was so thoughtful, he was like, "What about the month of March? Some kids are absent." And they were like, "No, two weeks."
So it is, okay.
They're a lot of fun. But we will take questions, if anybody has any questions.
Well, I, I, I think I'm, I'm not gonna do that, and I'm sorry, I did break a rule. But I, I really was curious, 'cause, you know. And, and my excuse is, like, wanna drop some coins over, so, you know.
Well, thank you, we'll definitely, I mean, they'll be happy to hear, to receive those. They'll be very happy to receive those.
Very good. Well, just want to thank you all so much for, for joining us tonight. What a pleasure. And thank you.
Aw, thank you. Thank you.
And Mr. Lesko, you, you are complete for the evening? Okay, thank you, sir. So I'm gonna turn over to interim superintendent John Yagelski for his superintendent's report or update.
I'll get it up here in a minute. I'm gonna cover, we always start with our vision, whoops, that's okay, vision, mission, and goals, and I think that's always appropriate. And I'm gonna talk about four topics, rather quickly if I can, starting with the reminders Really key points, budget proposal, no tax levy, no tax levy, no tax levy. And that is the third time in eight years, full foundation aid funding from the state made a lot of that possible this year. And, and we have benefits from that particular amount of aid. And we're maintaining all of our current staff and programs, including those staff members that were heretofore being funded out of the federal dollars. The Proposition Two is a proposal to use $9 million from our capital reserves to offset the inflationary cost of rebuilding Albany High School project, and again, no tax impact for that. And we have election, and I think we might even be able to tell you who's gonna be elected, because we have two candidates running for two open office, and, and I'm thrilled to see that there'll be continuity going forward with the board. That's, that's very important, so. The, the budget presentations, we've already done half a dozen presentations at a variety of places with a variety of people. We have really three, two more sessions to go, and then on the 16th is the big day for our budget vote on the Board of Election, Board of, in the election. The polls, as you know, are open from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. We have 15 voting locations citywide. One of them is new, but not very far apart from where it was. It's actually the, the parking lots are joined over the first ward by New Hope Church on 334 Second Avenue. No COVID-19 absentee options, as, as was in the past. And if anybody needs any additional information on our budgets and for that process, we can turn to albanschools.org/budget. Second topic was transportation, and while it's later in the year, it's still important that we, we were very pleased to have begun a new transportation partner to help in some of the persistent challenges we've experienced during this ongoing chronic shortage of bus drivers. Tech Valley Shuttle provides, that's the firm, provided transportation for Albany High, ROTC field trips in the, earlier in this week. This afternoon provided athletes some shuttle services for the first time, and you recall that was a topic that was bouncing around in the early part of the spring season. And transportation is continuing to work with multiple vendors, including Tech Valley and others, yellow bus providers, on additional services as we look for next year. We're testing it out with this year and focusing to a lot of extent on the athletics, so. And end of the year, fascinating thing is, we have many end-of-the-year dates, depending on where, where we're at. The Friday, the June 30th will be the last day for this school year. We'd like to share the following information. As you can see, Albany High, the last day of school is Tuesday, June 13th, and right thereafter begins the Regents' Exams, and then graduation is on Sunday, June the 25th, at MVP Arena, at noon time. And middle schools, the last day for those three is on the, the June 22nd, that's a full day, and then moving up ceremonies are on the 23rd, Friday, Friday the 23rd. In elementary school, the last day is the school, Thursday, or 20, June 22nd, and Friday, 20, 23rd, is early dismissal on both days, early start, and we have early start and early, late starts, so the, the exact times are different, but the, it's a uniform kind of closing. And moving cert, absurd, I can't say it, ceremonies, each school will share that information when their events are laid out, so. Lunch will be served, incidentally, on those early dismissal days, so that's important to know, too. The Albany International Center, secondary grades, the nine through 12, their last day is on June the 13th, and the Regents' Exams, and of course, the graduation is at the same time, at the same place. Whereas the middle school students, the last day is on the 22nd, and they have the moving up ceremony on Friday, the 23rd. Time has yet, yet been set for that. Tony Clements of Tony Clements of For Education, grades nine through twelve, the last school days, the twenty, it's June thirteenth, Regents' Exams through fourteenth to twenty-second, and the graduation, again, at the same time, the same place. Whereas the seventh and eighth grades, the last day of schools on June the twenty-second. And the eighth grade move up will take place at their home soon, so homeschool. And we close with what we've always reported on, and we're getting better at it, too. We're down to eighteen place classes, cases in, in April. Our fewest monthly case since way back on August of twenty-twenty-one, so. And we continue, as we turn to the last one, the same messages we've been passing along for this all along, so. And I think that may cover it unless somebody has some questions.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Colleagues, questions for, or comments for our interim superintendent? I, I see some nods. No, no. Okay. Mr. Yagelski, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. Next up, I wanted to just report out on the superintendent search update. We, as I believe I communicated in our last meeting, we had a really very terrific pool of applicants, both in terms of qualifications and also in terms of diversity. And we are, also began that same weekend of the twenty-second, screening all of the applications, resumes that had come, come in. And then last weekend, we spent both April twenty-ninth and April thirtieth, all weekend, thank you colleagues, really interviewing our candidates, first round and second round. We are continuing with that process, but we are committed to sticking to our timeline where we expect to have a decision made and announced by June fifteenth. And we'll keep you posted on all of that, but just wanted to make sure that the public was updated on what we had been working on. So colleagues, I, there's an item there, under there that says discussion, but I do not foresee any discussion. This has been a confidential search, so unfortunately, there are things that we cannot say. But we are moving ahead, and that's really the important thing I wanted you to know. So thank you all, and also, Mr. Yagelski as well. All righty. Next up is public comment. This is the time that we set aside to hear from members of our public. And we welcome the community's input about the decisions we are making. We set aside about thirty minutes at each meeting to hear from our district residents, parents, students, and other members of the community. And if we have more comments than can be accommodated, we certainly will extend the length of the public session right there, or we might even go into a second public comment period later in the meeting. Also, just to remind folks that we accept comments in writing, also through your virtual live participation and by voicemail. Comments that are not in person must be made at least six hours prior to the meeting to give us time to, to collect all the materials. Written comments must be limited to four hundred words and voicemail comments to three minutes. All comments must include the commenter's name and place of residence. We do not accept anonymous comments. And if you would like to submit a voicemail, a written comment, we encourage you to review the section addressing the board information at albanyschools dot B O E, excuse me, albanyschools dot org forward slash B O E, as well as review the instructions there on how to sign up for virtual live participation. And keep in mind, we all ask that all commenters, keep in mind that information about individual students and specific staff cannot be shared. Not only is that a violation of privacy, but every student and every staff member deserves to know that concerns about them will not be aired in public. And tonight, we have, let me just, sorry, for that reason also, members who read comments will pass over or substitute alternative words if individual names are mentioned. We also eliminate those names and descriptions from recorded voicemails also. And one final thing here is that please keep in mind that public comment is not the best place to first alert the district to a concern you have. We ask that you share concerns first with relevant staff, including the teacher or principal. If you feel that concern is not addressed adequately, you may appeal that, the appeal to that person's supervisor, up the chain of command, if necessary, to the superintendent. Decisions made by the superintendent may be appealed to the board. And we have had a number of comments and communications with our community. Many of those, I want to just applaud staff, Mr. Yagelski and Cabinet for being very responsive to those comments and questions that have come in. Really appreciate that very much. As, as a board, we're not gonna always have the exact answers, so we do rely upon you and, and are grateful for that support. And so now we do have, I believe, two comments, and I wanna turn to Dr. Shatur, who will read those, too. Thank you.
We have two letters today. The first one is from Jen Romano. With bullying-related suicides becoming an alarming epidemic, mass shootings greatly outnerving the days of the year, and gun violence the leading cause of death for American youth, is there more our schools can do? I'm here to share the information about no-cost accessible programs designed for grades K through twelve that can help. The Sandy Hook Promise Learning Center is a free online learning management system for their award-winning Start With Hello and Say Something programs. It's an easy-to-use, one-stop shop for know-the-science resources. The online courses were designed by educators with decades of experience in curriculum development, leveraging programs informed by research. The Learning Center includes full training videos, interactive lessons, school safety lesson plans, and a searchable digital library of resources to use at your own convenience. Start With Hello K through twelve teaches youth how to minimize social isolation, empathize with others, and create a more inclusive and connected school culture. The Say Something grades four through twelve program trains students on different types of warning signs and threats, especially on social media, of someone at risk of hurting themselves or others, and how to speak up to a trusted adult before tragedy occurs. The Save Students Against Violence Everywhere Promise Club empowers you to take charge of keeping schools safe by teaching modeling and continually reinforcing kindness, inclusiveness, and the value of looking out for one another. In four out of files, five school shootings, at least one other person had knowledge of the decker's plan, but failed to report it. The Say Something Anonymous Reporting System, grades six through twelve, provides a mobile app, telephone hotline, and a website for communities to report someone who's at risk of harming themselves or others. The twenty-four-seven-three-sixty-five system is staffed by trained crisis counselors who work with local law enforcement and school administrators to prevent both non-life, both non-life-threatening events, events. I urge all of our schools to kick off the school year this September with a Call to Action Week dedicated to kindness, inclusion, and making connections that will embrace these terrific programs. Visit www.sandyhookpromise.org to learn about these life-saving programs. Contact me as the Capital District Sandy Hook Promise Leader Ambassador, Jen Romano for Sandy Hook Promise at gmail dot com for assistance. Jen Romano, Slingelins, Sandy Hook Promise Leader Ambassador. The second letter comes to us from Leanne Iorio Tesselli. Good evening, members of the board. I hope you have had a chance to reflect on your appreciation of your teachers since the last meeting. How fitting that it be Teachers Appreciation Season. We, the teachers of the City School District of Albany, received a message from interim superintendent this week. In his message, it states, in the schools, in the City School District of Albany and every school setting around the world, teachers are the lifeblood of organizations' vision and mission. Here in Albany, our teachers devote themselves to helping our students grow and succeed. They nurture our students' academic development and help support their social, emotional needs. Our teachers empower students to strive to be their best li, best selves every day, going above and beyond to help them feel valued and supported. In our collective work to build back from the COVID-19 pandemic, our teachers continue to meet every challenge. Yes, we do all of those things, every day, during the design school day and beyond. When we should be spending time developing our own families and personal well-being, we give back to our students, families, and community. Interim student superintendent continues to say, we owe teachers a debt of gratitude. You do, but you owe us a lot more. You owe us a competitive contract that draws teachers, talented teachers, to our district, but also keeps our current teachers here and happy. You owe us a MOA, allowing us a raise during a negotiating year. Something you do for administrators and above. You owe us benefits that won't cripple our budgets. Copays that won't disavow us from seeking preventative medicine and services. You owe us healthcare contributions that show our value and worth. You owe us working conditions that are safe and supportive. You owe us respect and professionalism, not micromanagement. You owe us a workday where we are not paralyzed by initiative overload. While we appreciate your acknowledgement during Teachers Appreciation Week, we need more than acknowledgement and gratitude. We need action and support of us, not action that will hold us down. Thank you for taking the time to read this message, but also for putting in suggestions at the forefront of our district's mission.
Thank you, Dr. Shatur. And again, we appreciate all public comments. We do find hearing from you so valuable to the decisions that we are responsible for making. And again, our contact information for both public comment and routine correspondence is at albanyschools.org/boe. We now move to part of the meeting we call routine consent. During this portion of the meeting, we approve routine matters for the district. These include items like contracts, field trips, personnel matters, and the like. Each board member reviews each item carefully, but we vote on them as a group with no discussion. That allows us to use our meeting time more efficiently. Nonetheless, each board member has had the option to, has the option to set aside any routine consent item in order to require a separate discussion and vote on that item. With that introduction, I will now entertain a motion to adopt the routine consent agenda. Motion, Ms. Wilson, second, Dr. Shatur. Are there any set asides? Yes, Ms. Crechi?
Hi, I'd like to set aside item number seven, Skills USA, and item number eighteen, Tech Valley Shuttle, please.
Okay. And Ms. Wilson?
I also wanted to set aside item eighteen, Tech Valley Shuttle.
Okay. And Ms. Ban?
I'd want to set aside item five and eighteen.
Item five and eighteen, okay. Thank you. I see no other set asides. Let's see. Sorry, I just lost my place here. All in favor of adopting the routine consent items minus item five, item seven, and item eighteen? Is that all in favor? Yes. Okay. So let's break this down. Let's take them one at a time. All over, all in favor of adopting item five? And I apologize, I lost the name of that. I'm sorry, what's the name of that, item five?
Boston Freedom Trail.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, all in favor of adopting item five? May I get a motion to adopt? I'm sorry. I lose my place. There we go. May I get a motion to adopt item five, the Boston Freedom Trail? Ms. Crechi, second, Mr. Elmenyawi. Any discussion here?
So I just wanted to comment that I was very pleased to see this come, come over to us. I think that the Boston Freedom Trail is a very dynamic and empowering field trip. And so that's what I had to say about that. Just very pleased to see it and have our, many of our students experience the trip.
That's great. Any other comments on that one? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor of adopt, oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Elmenyawi. Pardon me. Went too fast. Go ahead.
I also wanted to lend my support to really all of the field trips, including this one that our students get to go on. They're enriching, they're exciting, and our students love to go on them, so.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All in favor of adopting item five, the Boston Freedom Trail? That is unanimous. That carries. Thank you. All right. May I have a motion to adopt? Hold on. Item seven, Skills USA? Mr. Elmenyawi, second, and Dr. Shatur? Any, any discussion on this?
I, yes, I wanted to say, I'm really excited and proud that we were able to meet the young man that's going to be going on this trip. I'm really proud of the work we're doing in our CTE program and really excited that we are turning out, that we're turning out students that can compete at this national level. However, every time we've had a Skills USA contract come up for approval, I've been concerned with the unusual method of lodging payment and the rates. My understanding is most conferences, you pay the conference fee, and then they say, hey, we've set aside a block of rooms, give us this code, and here's the special rates. But Skills USA requires that the school districts pay the organization directly rather than going through the hotel. This is problematic on, on one level because the rates they charge are well in excess of the governmental rates that our policies dictate, that we try to use whenever possible. Additionally, because we are a governmental organization, we are tax exempt, so if we were to reserve these rooms ourselves, we would not pay tax on them, whereas now Skills USA is passing through the tax to us. Additionally, when the Office of the State Controller audits school districts on travel expenses, they do point out when travel is being paid for in excess of the governmental suggestions, and they suggest that districts adhere to it. So what I would suggest is, if we are going to pay for these travel rates in excess of the governmental rates, we should have a little thing saying, hey, we looked for rates, we don't see anything in Georgia at that rate, or it's important for us to have our people stay on site for these reasons. I would like to see that going along with it because my rough math, there's two meals included in the price, but even assuming that those are seventy-five dollars apiece, we would be saving at least a thousand dollars by govern, by going with government standard rates, which would enable more students to travel for more competitions. The other thing is perhaps if we were to push back at Skills USA and say, hey, we love your competitions, we love your organization, but, hey, the people, you know, the, the people that run your audit committee really don't like your method of hotels, maybe, maybe we could affect some change and have a system where we could book directly, directly through the hotels and save the district money. I still will be voting for this contract because I think it's really important that we give the students the chance to compete, but the, just wearing my audit committee chair, just wanted to put that out there. I would have put it in an email, but this, but this contract was posted to the website after the deadline for comments on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Crechi, if you don't mind, I wanna separate this out a little bit. Are you able to move on the, on action?
Yes, just that I'd vote for, yes.
I just wanted to make sure I heard that correctly. That's all, not questioning you. Okay, so then the, the second piece is, is there, Cabinet, do you have a comment on this, or can you get back to us promptly with sort of the process as you handle it now? Kit, John, I, yeah?
I believe that's their way of covering their costs.
Okay.
Or built in, because they're paying for programs, they're trying to keep that down, and it looks good that I can send somebody, but then they find out the travel and all the other stuff is more expensive, but.
Okay.
But you gotta weigh the value of the programs.
Understood.
Versus the charge, is what I see.
Understood. But I think if we, if we could, Mr. Karas, or you, I'm not sure how this flows, but I just wanna make sure we're doing things correctly. I'm confident that we are, but I just feel like we want.
We're not doing anything wrong.
No, but want to make sure that the questions get answered so that this doesn't continue to be a question.
Yep. So I will down all the questions, and I will respond.
Thank you very much, sir. And Ms. Wilson, did you have?
And just to interject, I can also reach out to Skills USA and get some background information and the thought process behind the charges that go into this competition as well.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. McKenna. We'll leave that to you all. Ms. Wilson?
I don't wanna belabor it then. Actually, Superintendent McKenna, you interjected at the perfect time because I was gonna ask for such a similar, like, document that kind of assesses that the nature of the program is for the development of our students, and that although it's unorthodox in the way that they do it, like, I think Ellen mentioned, most conferences or awards don't do this. Maybe we could have some kind of statement on our file if we were to be audited that would, you know, resolve that.
Right. And, I'm sorry. Yes, who's got their hand? Dr. Shatur?
I just wanted to add that, you know, there are other school districts that also send their kids through this program, including the Bosse's. So maybe, you know, we can get a coalition of people, approach Skills USA. Because as Ellen mentioned, if the costs are made reasonable, more kids could go, right? Which only. Which only increases the value of the program. They all say there's economies of scale, so, well, let's make it bigger, but not necessarily more expensive.
Thank you, and I think staff has that info, those questions and comments. So, thank you all very much, alrighty. Anything else on this topic? Yes, Mr. Elmenyawi?
I just wanted to congratulate Elijah and just say that he is such a phenomenal young man. I was really impressed with what he was saying and how he said it. And his teacher, his instructor, Mr. Wafer, also, you know, phenomenal job. So I'm happy to vote for this, and I do understand the implications. Looking forward to seeing, you know, results, but I am absolutely happy to vote for this, thank you.
Ms. Mann, yes.
So there's no question that I'm going to vote on this. When I look at this through an equity lens, and I hear the concern, and I know that we are going to put something in place and have it on file in the event of an audit, but when I look at this through an equity lens, I have no problem supporting this now and also into the future. So I just need to be very upfront about that.
Thank you. All in favor of adopting item seven, Skills USA? That is unanimous, thank you. May I have a motion to adopt number, item 18, Tech Valley Shuttle? Dr. Shatur, Ms. Wilson? Seconds, is there any discussion? Ms...I'm sorry?
This is just a technical issue. I'm really excited about this local, about working with this local company to provide transportation for our students. But the, under the contract amount, it's just listed as 140 an hour, rather than some estimate over the overall total we'll pay this year, which we could, of course, extend if necessary. So I just wondered if we, and I will vote for this now because it's really important to get our kids where they need to go, but it would be great if we could amend that to the expected total that we would pay on this. Thanks.
Mr. Karas?
So when we're drawing up this contract, it was based on trying to determine how many shuttle routes we were trying to accommodate, and then if we had any additional feeders that we might have to try to accommodate to, right, Ron? Sorry. It was a joint effort for this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lesko, too.
So yes is the short answer. We will try and do that. The challenge in the short term for the school year is identifying exactly how we'll be able to deploy Tech Valley Shuttle runs in athletics, exactly which routes they're going to use. I think just like as today, they did a run that just was inside of our district, taking students from North Albany Hackett and Myers to a practice. So because of the nature of athletic transportation, that sometimes games change, sometimes there are rainouts, we're working through some of those details with Tech Valley about exactly how they're going to support our student athletes in particular this school year. But we certainly can't put a rough estimate on that for the course of this school year. And I think as we develop this relationship with them moving forward, we'll have a better sense of, more specifically, how they're going to be deployed, and more specifically, what a total dollar figure would be in future years.
That would be excellent. I think the other question I had was, is $140 an hour, does that include gas and everything? Or is that for one particular size of vehicle? Just little questions like that would be helpful, but I'm really excited that we were able to, that you guys were able to put this together.
Sure, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Yes, Ms. Wilson?
Again, just wanted, as Ellen indicated, we are excited about this project, and I want to again extend our thanks to Trent Griffin Braff, who did outreach to us, actually having seen and identified the need, and also want to highlight that they were awarded these, very recently, the Small Business Administration Upstate New York Business of the Year, very recently. So I just feel like it signifies that, you know, their large commitment to community service, and again, wanted to say thank you.
Trent was recognized in Wednesday's paper.
That's fantastic, thank you. If there are no other questions or comments on this, all in favor of adopting item 18, Tech Valley Shuttle? That is unanimous, thank you. As is our normal practice, we have arranged our agenda with all action items at the beginning. And tonight, we will start with policy, please. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, let me back up one second. There is a recognition perhaps I would like to give, shall, Mr. Yagelski, would you like to? Or actually, Ms. McKenna? Are you hearing us?
I'm hearing you, I'm right here.
Okay, would you like to do the honors?
Yes, I would love to. So I am so excited and thrilled to introduce our next Tony Clement Center for Education principal, Mr. Chris Martel. He comes to us with a wealth of knowledge and the skill set, the dedication, and the relationships to move Tony Clement to where we need it to be moving forward, starting on July 1. So with that said, I don't know if Mr. Martel would like to say a few words, but we are so thrilled to have him, and we absolutely believe that he is the right person to lead Tony Clement. So welcome, Mr. Martel, and we're so excited to have you join our team.
Thank you, Ms. McKenna. And thank you to the board, I'm excited for the opportunity, I really appreciate it, and I am thrilled to be back in Albany, in my home. So thank you all, I'm really looking forward to working with all of you.
Our pleasure, we look forward to it, thank you. Okay, there we go, I've got little head things there. Thank you, Ms. McKenna, and again, welcome, Mr. Martel. Our first action item has to do with policy. Can I call on our policy committee members, our chair, Dr. Shatur?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. We have no items for discussion because the policy hasn't met since the last time, but we have five items for action. There are three policies and two Tom sections. And unless there's discussion, I can just read all of them and we can vote on them together if there's consensus. Is that okay?
Yes, please.
So the first policy is 105, which is our Equity and Education Policy. The second one is 3000, Goals and Objectives for Administration. Third one is 4010, which is Equivalence in Instruction. And the two Team Operations Manual related policies are Board Self-Assessment and Board Goals and Evaluation of the Superintendent. So may I have a motion? Do it as a group?
As a group. Could you, you want to speak onto the mic? I'm not, I mean--
I apologize, I was indicating I wanted to do them one by one because I just had discussion on two.
Okay. One by one each policy, or? Which is Goals and Objectives for Administration?
3000 and 4010.
Okay. So all in favor for policy 105, and the two Team Operations Manual sections, Board Self-Assessment, Board Goals, and Evaluation of the Superintendent? That's unanimous?
It's unanimous.
Okay. 3000, Goals and Objectives for Administration? Ms. Wilson?
I was just curious if this would be, because it kind of indicates, I think, the one aspect of it being a board policy, you know, for administration, if it was going to be reflexive, sort of like, basically indicating that it would be a two-way document, like, indicating board actions also as far as interaction with the administration? That was just a question that I had.
I don't think this policy is intended to talk about board actions. It's mostly intended to talk about administration actions. Is there something in particular you were thinking about?
Or maybe it could carry over to something in the Team Operations Manual. I was just, when reading it, it just feels like it's just us directing towards the administration, and I'm wondering if there could just be, like, I do have notes, so maybe I'll just give that to the policy committee and just in terms of it being like a two-way participatory process.
Yeah, that would be great if you would put your thoughts together a little bit too on that. We do have in the Team Operations Manual an entire section about development of board goals and obviously multiple sections about the way that we communicate with, between board and administration. So I don't know that it ties directly to this policy, but it's definitely in there, those kinds of things. But if you have specific things--
Okay, so it would be things like board members, like, I'm just thinking, let's pretend this entire board evaporated, like, board members would not visit, you know, without proper protocol or direct staff in a very direct manner, so that's what I was more so thinking.
Yeah, those things are definitely in the Team Operations Manual very, very specifically, particularly around visiting campuses, there's very specific language around that. I think we switched it to schools rather than campuses, but there's very specific language around working through the board clerk to assure that it's done with prior notice and that it's never evaluative. It's about educating the board about what's going on in the schools. And then, what was the other one, the other example you had about? Visiting, well, that was visiting without notice, or that there's always notice unless it's an open forum, right? The only time where you wouldn't necessarily have to, if you're going to a school concert, you might not. You would, as a courtesy, try and get notice, but if it's a public event, no. So that one is definitely covered.
Yeah, and this policy specifically, you know, the board's directions to the administration, that these are what we would like you to do. What the board, there's a different policy in Board Goals and Board Behavior. So may I have a motion to approve 3000? All in favor? Okay, unanimous. And the next one was 4010, Equivalence in Instruction?
Are we citing No Child Left Behind, or are we supposed to cite Every Student Succeeds Act?
It's this one.
This is an excellent question for Ms. Spektal, who's in the room, who's in charge of this policy. Is that, do we need to update that? She's coming to the mic. I do not believe so, but I will check.
Okay, so we'll table this one for next time? Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the policy committee work, great, thank you. And next, we have a discussion, and I think perhaps action also, regarding the internal audit. Turn that over to Mr. Karas.
Good evening, thank you. So this is a quick update on the internal audit that was completed a couple of months ago. Unfortunately, the audit committee wasn't able to meet due to a conflict of a budget presentation the same night that we were supposed to do a audit committee. So we're going to meet again pretty soon about the corrective action plan that will go with this audit. And then we, you'll see in this presentation, there is the targeted audit that will be done July 5th, 6th, and 7th. So, just vision, mission, and goals. The internal audit is based on 2005 School Finance Oversight and Accountability Legislation. We are required to have the annual financial risk assessment and the annual special area testing. The drafts were reviewed with the audit committee. The review completed, I'm sorry, excuse me. The questionnaires, interviews, and walkthroughs. We had sample transactions. The report layout, which was presented to the board and the committee a few weeks ago. Areas of control weakness and potential risks were identified. The areas where no control weakness and potential risks were identified. The results of the sample transactions from the prior year to control weaknesses and potential risks were removed. Out of the 17 recommendations that were identified, three are currently being addressed. For our special area testing, that will be conducted July 5th, 6th, and 7th. It will be the procurement through the grants funding. Any questions?
Do we have questions, colleagues?
Could I just ask one?
Sure.
And not necessarily, it really pertains to the question that was coming up around the contract and exceeding state rates or being taxed. Is that to what, I'm assuming that an auditor would pick up those things? And again, not that we've done anything wrong, but that we're losing money. We're not, yeah.
With Skills USA, it's actually an extra classroom club activity. So they are actually not, they are under the school district, but they're not technically under the school district. When, and I'm going to get more details, so I just want to make sure that I have all the details before I really answer the questions. But, for example, when we go to Syracuse or Rochester for these events, they do go on the bus. So to stay off campus or away from where the event is going on, there's a bus that we have to go back and forth, the bus stays with the students, transporting their equipment and supplies, that would also have to take into consideration as well. So the judgment of staying there where the event is, which is a little bit more costly, and trying to find places to eat with the bus with, it's trying to juggle and to balance all those costs as well. Also, pretty much every district in New York State tries to go to those local areas, and that creates the demand, which drives up the cost. So even if we try to go to another hotel that's pretty close by, the cost will also be up. So, but again, as I say, I'm going to get more information. The biggest part is that it's an extra club, or extracurricular club that we do through the school.
Very helpful, thank you. And just because we've been involved in Skills USA for a long time, and so, not that the question shouldn't emerge, but I've just wondered why it hadn't been perhaps picked up, you know, by auditors saying, hey, you know, you could do it differently. But appreciate your getting back to us, yeah, thank you. Anything else, colleagues? Thank you, Mr. Karas.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, but so no action on this?
No, actually you have to accept this.
Okay, so let me go back and, shall we do that, right? May I get, entertain a motion to adopt the internal audit? And I see Ms. Crechi, and seconded by Ms. Mann, all in favor? That is unanimous, thank you, sir. And next up is the draft of the 2023-24 Board Calendar, Meeting Calendar, which has been my responsibility, and apologies for the significant delay in that. And Ms. Jena, thank you for bringing that up, the calendar. And I just put it up for discussion tonight so that you would have time to make revisions or changes. I'm going to ask you right now to not so much get caught up on the side on the right where we list the schools. I think our cabinet, particularly Dr. Wilson Turner, has been through that. I've made a couple of revisions since. And so I really want you to be, pay more attention to the dates, that would be helpful. So, any comments or questions, things right now that you want to point out? Okay, seeing none, I would like for you to take a look at it, and we'll put it back on the agenda for the 18th for action. Okay, thank you very much. And next up, item K for discussion, is our Grading and Attendance Task Force. Welcome, everyone. And we'll let, I think Ms. Spektal is going to start. Good to see you, gentlemen.
All right. Good evening, Board of Education. We are here to report out on the work of the Grading Attendance Task Force. I wanna start by commending the committee members for their passion and commitment to this work. The committee has a deep regard for students, teaching, and learning. They seek a balance between student accountability and student support to help foster motivation and engagement in the educational program. Tonight, we will give you our committee's findings and draft recommendations as the first level of this work. There is more work to be done before finalizing the task. At this time, I would like to introduce our co-facilitators of the task force. To my left, here is Sean Fitzsimons, who is an Albany High Social Studies teacher. And then we have Dr. Joe Slako, our Albany High School Operations Principal. And then Frank Del Signor, our Secondary Instructional Supervisor for Math and Business. So I will turn it over to these gentlemen.
Thank you, Ms. Spektel. So, I'm gonna take a moment to kind of walk through the system that we used, and then we're gonna sort of pass it on and share out. So, I wanna start by saying, if you look at the folks who the superintendent pulled together for this, it's a very diverse array of people in terms of their experiences and their mindset. We've got guidance counselors. We've got people who have done the Apex Program. We've got PPS in there, district administrators, school administrators, teachers of a variety of subjects. And so, you know, coming together, superintendent gave us a charge, and that was to, first of all, review our current grading and attendance policies. And of course, you, the board, understand this, but we had a lot of discussions about what that meant, policies being those broad sort of categories that sort of set the stage for what the district's gonna do. And then our procedures that get filled in by the district, such as grading, you know, handbooks, and then our practices. We reviewed our current credit recovery procedures, looking at Apex and summer school especially. We conducted open forums with secondary staff, reviewed relevant data, including pass rates connected with credit recovery efforts, grade changes. And then, we really took a long time exploring policy implications of, you know, the recommendations that we put together. This was quite a long process, but a great process. You know, it started on February 1st, and we've met multiple times after school in half-day sessions. Originally, we were asked to complete this work by March 30th, but the superintendent graciously extended our timeline, and we absolutely needed it because this is very difficult and challenging work. We started with a review of the policies, which we'll talk about in a moment. We brought in the legal team from the district, Honeywell. We created a staff survey, and we're very thoughtful about that, administered it to the staff, and had over 200 responses, so a very robust response that we were able to work with. We, as I mentioned, had a couple of folks on the, on the task force that are very intimately familiar with Apex, spent a long time looking at how that sort of plays out, crafted our recommendations. And I have to tell you, when we went into this, I mentioned we have all kinds of different people with different perspectives. And I don't think we ever expected this to be a consensus-driven process. However, with the time that we were given, thank you again, and the amount of information we had to work with, I can say with great assurance that we all walked out of there feeling like this was very much a consensus-driven process, reflecting not only teachers, but also administrators at various levels, different perspectives. So I really wanna make that very clear, and I believe that all my task force colleagues would agree with that. And we finally finalized those recommendations, which you received. And we'll talk about what comes after this at the end. But I'll start by looking at the, you know, findings regarding policies and, and our practices. So, first and foremost, we looked at the board's policies in relation to NISPA, the New York State School Board Association Guidance. They have sort of best practices on model policies. And I will note that we found that ours are actually quite, quite in alignment with those, with some exceptions. So, for example, the NISPA policy does have a minimum attendance for course credit as a suggestion. We looked at our guidance documents, like I said, such as the grading handbook, and looked at them in relation to the policies, found that they were actually quite well-aligned. We brought in that legal team, and as you can imagine, with so many teachers in the room, there were quite a few questions that we peppered them with. It was quite fun, being able to talk to lawyers like that, yeah. But, you know, in any event, what we did find is that while it appears that all of our policies and the practices that we put forward are in alignment with state ed, you know, requirements, legal counsel did acknowledge that there are a lot of things about the way that things are being implemented that have created some challenges, and that it is very much within local control to be able to address those through changes in policy and practice. So that gave us a great degree of comfort in knowing that we can move forward and at least put forth recommendations. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Slako, and thanks.
Good evening, everyone. So, the first type of data that we collected was qualitative in nature and aimed to really capture the opinions, the feelings, and those intangibles directly from our middle school and high school faculties. And with two math brains sitting at this table, it was quite the stretch for us, but we fought through it. We really wanted to be extremely intentional with how we crafted the survey that we sent out, one, to elicit authentic responses, but also to allow the task force to be able to quantify and utilize the data collected to ensure that everyone had a voice. Therefore, we decided to ask the same three open-ended questions, both about grading and attendance, and you have those there. What opportunities do our current grading or attendance practices provide for our students and teachers? What challenges do our current grading or attendance practices pose to our students and for our teachers? And then finally, what suggestions do you have to improve in strengthening our grading or attendance practices? Those questions created a meaningful but heavy lift for the task force. We then took time to sort all 226 responses. We first completed a norming exercise, then categorized the responses. We then discussed those categories further, refined them, and landed with the following major areas of concern, which we believe capture all the concerns reported. The first was assigning a minimum grade of 55 even if a student has never attended a class. The next centered around expectations, accountability, and consequences. Then, the minimum attendance threshold for course credit, Apex, which is our credit recovery program, and summer school practices and protocols, late work protocols, hallway truancy, and overall concern about learning and proficiency. And these will all be discussed further in our recommendations. Next, we utilized School Tool and the amazing work of our task force member, Trish Wolf, to collect our quantitative data. This is where we got excited. We looked at and compared data from 2018, 2019, which was the last pre-COVID year, and the 2021, 22 school year. Some of the highlights of that data review are as follows. So, we looked at approximately 20,000 records for each one of those school years, and those records include courses, not individual students. For example, a student can take seven, eight, nine courses. That's what we're talking about when we talk about those records. And for each of those school years of those approximate 20,000 records, about 17,000 of those were completed records. So that is where a student actually finished the coursework. Doesn't mean they passed, doesn't mean they failed, they just completed, they didn't transfer out, they didn't drop a course, so on and so forth. In looking at those records, we then wanted to look at, well, how many of those records resulted in a student passing the course but having poor attendance? And then we quantified poor attendance with more than 15% of an absent rate for the course in question. So we're looking at individual courses here. So, for example, if I'm in Algebra I, and I passed that course, and I had at least 15% attendance or more, how did that look in these given years? So, in the 2018, 2019 school year, 20% of students with full year enrollments that earned a credit in a course had 15% or more absences in those courses. And we compared that to in 21, 22, which is post-COVID, 32% of those students fell in that same arena. And then we also have the breakdown for students with less than a full year enrollment, maybe they transferred in, so on and so forth. And that was 37% in 1819, which grew to 44% in 21, 22. Additionally, we looked at the number of students, or the percent of students, I should say, earning credit while failing three or more quarters. And in 1819, that was 0.5%, and 21, 22, 2.4%. We were also asked to look at some specific contributing factors that could explain some of those numbers. And the first we looked at was Apex, which is our credit recovery system. And in 2018, 2019, again, we're talking about the number of students who received course credit in a course. 2.4% of those students who received course credit did so with some sort of apex involved in there. And in 21, 22, 1.6% of those students did so with some sort of apex in there. The next category, we call Regents' Overrides. And to explain, this is when a final year average was below 65, so not passing, but the student passed that requisite Regents' Exam, thus, we granted that student a passing grade for the course. 2018, 2019, that was negligible, excuse me, pretty much 0% right around there. And in 21, 22, 0.5%. And then, the last category we looked at was just a final mark override. So, for whatever reason, at the end of the year, a grade was increased to 65 or above technically. And in 1819, that was not calculated, but in 21, 22, it was about 2.7%. And the reason it was not calculated was because these were individual text files that Ms. Wolf had to go through and manually cipher through one by one. The final thing we looked at with our data was the question, do students receive the minimum grade of that 55 just in marking period one, and then they have an epiphany and they get back on track, or does this continue throughout the year? So, as you can see in this table, both in 2018, 2019, and 21, 22 school years, the number of minimum grade 55s awarded actually increases as the year goes on. And of note would be the comparison that although this did exist pre-COVID, it was certainly exacerbated post-COVID. And now I turn this over to Mr. Del Signor.
Good evening. This leaves us to our recommendations. The first group of recommendations would require changes in policy. The first concern is in the area of student attendance in the 55. There is currently no minimum attendance requirement for students to attend school and class. The task force recommends that in order to be eligible for the 55 minimum marking period grade, students must meet the minimum attendance threshold. In the first year, students may have no more than 20 class absences per marking period. In the second year, they may have no more than 15 absences per marking period. And in the third year, they would have no more than 10 absences per marking period. The policy recommendation incentivizes attendance, and the phased-in approach would give students time to acclimate to this change and also allow the district to evaluate the policy change and adjust if needed. Changes to policy and practice would include a mechanism to address exceptions and extenuating circumstances for students, and we see the likely place for this to happen through our multi-tiered system supports with our MTSS process. The next area of concern was for middle school grades in the fourth quarter. The concern is students in the middle school tend to be in attendance, but the fourth quarter marking period grade 55 that they have currently causes them to disengage from instruction and stop completing their class assignments because they've already earned a passing grade in that class. This recommendation would incentivize engagement in the fourth marking period. The task force is recommending that at the middle school level, students who meet the minimum attendance threshold would be eligible for the 55 in quarters one, two, and three only. And in quarter four, they would get the grade that they earn. The next area of concern is regarding summer school. Students who are not attending class during the school year are attending summer school as a less rigorous pathway to course credit. The task force believes the district should reinstate the pre-COVID policy. That policy was that students must have no more than 28 class absences for a full credit course, or 14 class absences for a half-credit course, in order to be eligible for enrollment in a credit-bearing course in summer school. The next group of recommendations could be addressed with our guidance and practices. The first is in the area of Apex. Some students are disincentivized to attend classes during the school day due to the current Apex practice. Of 310 records that earned a credit by using Apex, 251 were chronically absent from said course, which is about 81%. The recommendation aims to have students prioritize an attending class during the school day to eliminate the compounding learning loss. And the task force recommends that students are eligible to participate in credit recovery in a given course for the previous marking period if they maintain at least an 85% attendance rate in that course during the current marking period. The next concern is also in the area of Apex. Students participating in Apex for credit recovery are achieving passing grades without demonstrating proficiency for the coursework in which they are enrolled. The Apex grade is currently being averaged with the previously assigned 55 minimum marking period grade. This recommendation ensures that credit recovery grading practices do not incentivize students to pursue a pathway to course credit that denies them the advantage and experience that live instruction provides. The task force recommends that students participating in credit recovery may earn a maximum marking period grade of a 65 upon successful completion of the required Apex modules. The next area of concern is tardiness. Some students are frequently tardy to class, missing instruction, and contributing to hallway traffic that disrupts the school environment. The task force believes the district should reinstate the pre-COVID practice. That practice was that students will be marked present for a class if they attend at least 50% of the period or have a known absence. To be clear, a known absence is an internal coding that we use for reasons such as music lessons, office appointments, so on and so forth. The next area of concern is regarding late work. Some students are currently disincentivized to complete assignments on time because the current practices dictate there is often no penalty for submitting assignments past their due date. The task force believes that inconsistent late work protocols contribute to a culture that does not incentivize meeting deadlines and do not prepare students to be college and career-ready. The task force is recommending that each department collaboratively develop guidance and procedures for submitting assignments past their due date that are consistent. Those procedures for turning in assignments past their due date would be reviewed annually by each department. The next area of concern is regarding roll-ups. The practice is currently that we are increasing grades, AKA rolling them up at the end of a marking period or the final mark, from anything in the range of 62.5 to 64.9 to a 65, which misrepresents students' performance. The task force recommends that all marking period and final school marks reflect the calculated average determined by the district's grading platform. A calculated average could still be increased by the teacher based on established grading policies and practices if they see fit. The next area of concern is regarding 55s being used within the teacher's grade book. The concern is that in response to the guidance in the secondary grading guidance document, some teachers assign a minimum of a 55 to individual assignments and assessments, which results in cumulative grade inflation, which is, again, misrepresenting student performance. Because this past practice, because of this past practice, we are recommending removing this language from our guidance document. While teachers may continue to use this practice, including it in the guidance document could be perceived as leading. The next area of concern is regarding Regents. Some teachers are concerned about the process by which students who achieve a passing grade on a New York State Regents' Exam but do not pass the course, receive course credit. The task force believes that- pass the course receive course credit. The task force believes that grade changes without a conversation with the teacher of record contribute to a culture of mistrust and misunderstanding between teachers and administrators. The task force recommends that the building principal should review all cases and afford the student and teacher of record an opportunity to discuss and contextualize the student's individual performance and circumstances. The building principal does still reserve the right to change a final grade. Finally, the last three areas of concern relate only to the middle school in the area of promotion and retention. The concerns were that at the middle level, students are being promoted to the next grade level without earning a passing grade in any core class, and often without attending summer school. Also, some students are de-incentivized from passing all classes in grade eight because the requirement was removed as a prerequisite for attending the moving up ceremony. Also, middle-level summer school accountability does not consistently require student attendance during summer school to successfully complete the program. Concerns came, these concerns came from the staff survey and require further study. The task force suggests a more in-depth review of these concerns with all relevant stakeholders represented. The task force is recommending that a review of the promotion and retention policy, 4750, and the related practices take place, and that all actions are communicated to relevant stakeholders prior to the start of the 23, 24 school year. The task force also recommends that a timeline and process be communicated to those stakeholders no later than the end of the 22, 23 school year. And with that, I will turn it over to Sean for our next steps.
So at this point, we are continuing to collect stakeholder feedback. Yesterday, we emailed both school administrators and staff a copy of this and the recommendations, and we are asking them to respond to a survey in which we are looking for their level of agreement on a scale of one to five, with optional comments as well. We also are going to be inviting the school community, so the broader community, parents, families, students, to provide feedback as well. We will be holding a virtual Microsoft Teams community forum from 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock on Tuesday, the 9th. We're currently working with communications to add a link and video. And then we'll be holding in-person sessions on Wednesday, the 10th, at Albany High School from 4:30 to 5:30, and Thursday, the 11th, in-person at Hackett from 6:00 to 7:00. And we will be collecting questions and comments using a feedback form that will be posted on the website through Friday, May 12th. Any questions?
So, thank you all very much. This was, boy, yeah, a lot of work and a lot of detail even for us to kind of wave through. I'm sure there are going to be questions. I do have a suggestion, folks. Would you, if you have clarifying questions, maybe that would be helpful to ask. But I'm wondering if we want to absorb this, also wait for the community or the various pieces of input from the, our diverse community to come in, just what your pleasure might be if we could take a minute to, to kind of discuss that. Ms. Savage?
I'm just going to say, I really like your idea of doing clarifying questions first now, in case we didn't understand the data or didn't understand something. But I think it's good for us to allow the community to speak before we start taking positions on things because we will learn more from more information coming in.
Ms. Wilson, and then Ms. Mann.
So, my, thank you. And I agree 100% with Vice President Savage and President Smith about absorbing the information and waiting to hear from the community. I would like to know how the task force is going to engage our diverse community. Because this is going to affect our diverse student body.
Absolutely.
A little tag on to your question. Are you okay with that? Okay, go ahead.
I want to tag on to the question of community engagement, and in particular, I want to note that the first of these meetings is less than a week from now, and I don't think it's been advertised yet. So I wonder if there is a necessary urgency to those, that timeline, or if maybe we could create a little more gap because people do have busy lives. And as we all know, in the secondary world, it is mayhem, as we like to call it. It is the land of APs and concerts and sporting events and all that, that. And the idea that parents are going to be free in less than a week to do this is aspirational.
Go ahead. One more tag on.
We're just dogfiling. I apologize. But since my statement was going to be very similar to Anne's about the turnaround time, and also the fact that, I think it was stated that we thought the community would be membership of the task force, but it's clear that your recommendations obviously have fidelity to the process. They're very transparent. So I was going to let you respond to Damaris's question before, because that was just one of my questions, but it can wait.
And I just want to tag on to that is, we only have, like, evening times available. So what if we have parents that work second and third shifts?
The task force, I suspect, would very much appreciate more time to run those kinds of meetings at different times of the day. We did want to, at the very least, have those pieces done before the end of the official school year because we, you know, the educators on the task force are here, and also prepare for those next-level steps. And I do think that after we come back to the board with some of the information from the survey and that feedback, I don't want to project, but we would likely probably take a look at the policies again. And in doing so, we could, we could have, you know, a wide committee for that work. I mean, we have done that before with different, I'm thinking of the one that Dr. Wilson Turner did with, yes, Equity and Acceleration. Those were two very large committees that took a great deal of time to go through that. I do know that the task force would like to see some of these, if we are going to move forward with some of them, for next year. And I do think that there are some practice things that we could certainly do outside of some of the policy work. But that is how I'm sort of projecting. I don't know if Mr. Yagelski wants to add anything to that, but that's how I see us moving.
We started with the target date. And I've often learned that if you don't set timelines, you don't really get it done. But I've not been reluctant to adjust those timelines and wouldn't be opposed to adjusting them now. But you're going to get too close to next year. You don't want to, you want to be careful that we've finished this year so that faculty in particular goes away knowing what the expectations are.
I have something to add on that, but Ms. Creachey, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you for your work because what an amount of data to go through and what an amount of research you've done. I think it's really fantastic. And I liked, I liked how you organized some of the data to show, you know, patterns and trends, like when you looked at the numbers of failing courses by quarter. And so one of the questions I have is, since we're talking about failing and struggling students here, were you able to parse out the data to get case studies of failing students, students that go to summer school, students that do Apex, to see if there were any trends or patterns in individual students, you know, like what's going on with them, what's getting them back on track, even if it's just grades? And then the second part of that question is just, what kind of work will, as we get into the input from the community, what kind of work will we be doing specifically to reach out to students who are failing courses, students who are taking Apex, students who have chronic attended issues, who might not, who probably aren't those students that are raising their hands responding to the surveys, they're not going to do it for extra credit, to talk to them and find out? Because there, I see some hypotheses in here about which levers will impact student behavior, but in fact, we might not actually know what is, what really, what is incentivizing them. So I would like to know if we'd look at case studies first of all.
That's a great question. We did not, in terms of this task force, dig into individual students because at the high school level specifically, and I believe at the middle school level as well, the MTSS process that we use on a weekly, if not daily, basis, especially within the academies, that's the majority of the work that we do. So we do that deep dive into our Tier Two and Tier Three students. So we know everything about them. We know what makes them tick, what doesn't make them tick, where to find them, where not to find them, things of that nature. So that work, I think we already had a handle on. It was this data collection and taking the anecdotal data, which is real, qualitative, with the quantitative, marrying them together, to see what the global story is. Because we are all very good. And we sat in a lot of meetings where a lot of educators talked very passionately about those specific students that they had by name, one after another after another. But, correct me if I'm wrong, we really wanted to focus the task force on the broader picture and how does policy and practice across the board at the secondary level really speak to what we're doing and how we are interacting with those individual students.
Thank you. That's a really helpful, that's a really helpful way to place this project because I think you guys know that that's what you do. And so putting that in the broader context is really helpful. I have another different question, and I'm going to wait to go around and come back, okay?
Thank you. Mr. Aminyawi, and then Ms. Wilson.
So, I'm curious if any thought or analysis was put into determining what changes would have happened had these, these policies been implemented last year. See what I'm saying? So what would the grades or what this graduation rate have been had we been doing what you say we should be doing?
We played that game. We went down that rabbit hole. And we went down a couple different paths, I'll say. And what we found was data that ended up being all over the place because everything was so interconnected. So as soon as we changed one variable and said, well, what if this wasn't the case? We would then eventually say, well, if that wasn't the case, then this wouldn't have happened, and this wouldn't have happened, and therefore the water was so muddied that all our heads were spinning after two hours. And we felt like we didn't accomplish anything, although the conversation was absolutely phenomenal and took us to a different place later on. I guess what I'm saying is we couldn't isolate one variable in a very real way.
And I would just want to add on that we are looking, we were looking at line items in a table, but we're talking about students, and students respond to changes. So purely looking at the mathematics of changing this policy will have this effect on the graduation rate, will have this effect on the grading. That does not speak to what we're hoping to accomplish with a lot of our recommendations, which is by setting high expectations but providing support, that we can positively impact how our students are ready for college and careers when they leave us.
Thank you. I just, if you don't mind, I'm just going to, a little privilege here. So that, my, my thinking throughout everything you were saying, I kept coming up with that one word, expectations. How do we balance that? And how do you, so, and also the real question too, is how do we roll out these changes so that the message is communicated that we expect, we expect this of you, and we're going to help you get there, you know? So that, I think that's the piece that I was kind of focused on around hoping we get some feedback from community and variety of community members on that piece in particular. It's a culture mindset kind of shift, you know? I mean, all of us do this. If, if we think there's an easy path, it's like water. We're going to take it, you know? I mean, sorry. It's just something that we do as human beings. And I, so, anyway. Back on target here, I've got Ms. Wilson, Ms. Savage, Dr. Shatur, and Ms. Creachey.
Thank you. And this is, of course, with respect to that the community hasn't had an opportunity as of yet to react, respond, or engage. I just had like a bifurcated question. It seems to be a very, and thank you for your recommendations. I'm still processing, of course. It seems to be a very policy-driven conversation with respect to, as you mentioned, how much, how well we're aligned to NISP and things of that nature and our implementation, the aspect that we do have local control. And the part that comes to mind for me, of course, is the level of autonomy everybody involved has, whether it be the teachers, you know, everybody involved really. And just curious about, how is this, how do you put this? You know, what, how do we factor in other aspects such as our equity policy and our code of conduct? Because, for example, you mentioned tardiness. So if you were late to class, then where were you on the way to class, you know? Like, and how do we allow for success in that? For example, does that mean there's certain timing issues, location issues, or people simply someplace else? And how do we account for that? And, you know, I'm not trying to solutioneer right now here, but just, you know, thinking about that. And then to the point of, we, of course, are data-driven. So are there certain, and this, of course, is a question for the ether and for us to figure out together. Is there something along the lines of flags? For example, 65 is passing. So thus, if you fall into the 64 range, what interventions take place at that point? And how, how do we retrieve people and bring them back on track?
I talked about this a little bit in recommendation one, and it follows through in a number of them. The task force felt as though the MTSS process that we use would be a really important part of any policy changes and practices that we change, so that we are responsive to the individual needs of our students in providing that support that I just talked about a few minutes ago. We, we acknowledge that there are always going to be exceptions and extenuating circumstances that we will need to respond to as we work through this.
Ms. Savage?
So I also want to thank you all for your work. It's obviously, it's obvious that a tremendous amount of thought went into these recommendations, and particularly the way they were structured and the qualitative survey, the way you broke that down and categorized it to collect the information, then have the recommendations aligned to that is very, very helpful in understanding the whole process. I had one detailed question that I was wondering if you could shed some light on, which is that I was a little surprised, there's a slide here that compares certain factors, including Apex from the 2018 to the 2022 school year. I don't know, Ms. Ray, yell, there we go. No, that's the one. Oh, that one. I was very surprised to see the Apex number because I noticed that a lot of your recommendations had to do with Apex. And I know there's a lot of feelings about Apex. And I was just expecting that number to go the other way. And to see that the number of Apex credit, credit-earned courses was quite a bit lower than prior to the pandemic really surprised me. And I'm wondering if you can help me understand both why that happened and why so many recommendations were made around Apex when, in fact, the numbers suggest that it's not as highly utilized as it used to be.
Great question. We went into this thinking Apex was going to be a very hot-button, not topic, because it was a hot-button topic, but driver in some of this data, because that's what we felt. That's what the building felt. When we got to the numbers, we realized that wasn't really the case. And to put the numbers in perspective, 2018, 2019, we're talking about 343 individual courses that were affected out of the 14,298 and 21, 22, 211 of the individual courses out of the 13,141 that were passed. So it's something that we focused on initially because without the data collection to that point, we thought it was going to be something. However, there are a lot of practices within Apex that we felt uncomfortable with as they exist or don't exist in a very well-written manner. So it's something that we always fell back to as the kind of catalyst and driver to other conversations, as this could be the mechanism to get around this other issue we're talking about. So Apex and summer school were two things that the task force was fearful that if we tighten certain things up, this could be a loophole. So let's look at it all together. If we're doing this, let's do it right. Let's tighten everything up, start to finish. And that way, we can support, support our students the best that we can. And that way, we can support, support our students the best that we can.
Dr. Shatur?
I actually have comments and questions mixed together. So, just allow me some time. So, I have a few comments and questions all mixed together. So, allow me more than just one question. It's, first question is, you know, those numbers increase over the quarters. Are those unique students or have you haven't gotten to that point where, you know, because kids could have failed in first and second quarter and it could be different set of kids who have failed in fourth quarter. So, you haven't gotten to that point?
We, we had that data by student. I don't think that we felt as a task force it told a specific story. Some students, all four quarters, you see that straight through. Others did go up and down.
It changes the impact. I mean, if it's 100 students all through the four and they're getting passed, that's different from, there are 50 students who are coming through and it's a different 50 student who happened to pass that. And these guys had other credit or whatever.
Yes. And what hit us at the task force level was that the number increased both years as the year went on. It didn't get better.
Okay. Going back to the community engagement piece, when you do go out, I mean, if you could dive down and look at the type of students, the subcategories and address the language issue too, because you're going to be reaching out to their parents. And we have a lot of, you know, ELL students and they, you know, so communicate in multiple ways, in different languages. We have the supports in our department, in our district. So, let's use them because we really want them at the table, right? We want them at the table and engage them. Now, a lot of this comes back to policy and regulations. And you want them implemented in some way or something. This is before the end of the school year and you want the new things to be in place before the start of the next year, right? And communicate the teaching so that next year's grading policy will be following these new guidelines. The challenge is summer, right? We're having, so even the code of conduct, we're having a special policy meeting in May because May is budget year, budget season and all of those things. And June would be, June 7th is the policy meeting after that. We don't meet in July. So, next might be August, September, right? And the school starts. So, what I would recommend, being chair, I'm going to ask this. If you could take those policies that you looked at, those guidance documents that you, that you marked it up, if you could send us those, we could take a look while you're doing all this to see, okay, these are the things that. So, when we do meet in policy, we'll have some discussion and get the ball rolling. So, it's not like, okay, we have to wait and now, oh, summer, no one's here, right? So, that would really help us. The, the changes, so in terms of policy, policy changes are brought to us by the district, right? Unless it's a NISBA sanction mandate or this board. I mean, lately, the board has been looking at all policies from an equity lens. So, we've been mandating changes in policies. So, this policy was changed because it came from the district. The 55 rule was changed at that point in time. And the justification, as we all know, was, okay, if kids are failing first and second quarter, let's give them a chance, they can recover. But the way you described it, the intent was one thing. The actionable items that were happening are not what the policy says, right? So, we need to clarify those things. So, anything you can do in giving us that information before, so next policy meeting is 5/25, so May 25th. And the one after that is six, June 7th. June 5th, we moved it, yeah, June 5th.
All right, we just moved it.
Right. So, June 5th. So, if you could get us before that time, then at least we will get our part of this stuff done. And because it is important that we have those things adopted in place before the next school year starts. So, everybody's on the same page and we know exactly where we start.
Dr. Shatur, before you go on with that. So, I mean, I, I think that's interesting. I'm also still concerned that that, so, two things of my thought were that some of this, there was a lot of policy alignment. So, I wasn't quite sure how much policy change would actually be needed. So, I hear you. But, and that may be fine then if we go, if you go ahead and give us what those are and then meet. However, there's still things that are, should emerge from conversations with all of our diverse community members.
Absolutely.
So, I'm, it still means another, we've got to find some time.
What I'm saying is if we wait till that point, then we are waiting and losing time. If we take what we have and just highlight this, hey, these are the things that we need to look at, then we can start looking at it while we get more input. It's going to take a while before the policy is changed.
Understood. So, I won't quibble. I, I just feel like that's, okay. I just not quite sure I'm on that same page, but I hear you.
I mean, that's how we function in policy.
Well, I know, but this is really, this is really something quite huge.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, and the timing of it is, is all messed up.
If you want it done by September, this is what I would recommend.
I understand what you'd recommend. I hear you. I'm just, I'm just saying, I have concerns about that, which I'm not trying to debate it. I'm just saying I have concerns.
And one last point to finish my thought is, you know, this, see, this is the university too, where students don't attend, right? And just giving them the points doesn't help anybody, right? I'd never do that in my classes. I'll give you a chance to pass, but you're going to earn it. Since you couldn't come to class and earn it, you're going to do some extra work to earn it. So, having that incentive, incentivization as extra effort, another assignment or something, and you're willing to do the extra work, great. Give you that restorative process to sign up and do it. Now, that comes at a cost. On the other end, we have to grade more exams and more things. So, there is a balance, but rather than, I am never, I will never support, just give them the grade because you're not helping anybody.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Crechi.
Thank you. I, I wanted to confirm something you kind of touched on before, which is at the beginning, you said that your research and the analysis had shown that our policies are consistent with NISPA guidance and aligned with our own district policies. I had wanted to confirm that, that our practices, sorry, that our practices now, after this deep study, are in fact consistent with what state ed requires of us and that we're in compliance with state ed. There's no legal requirement to change things. We're just talking about improvements?
I mean, my understanding based on our conversations with Honeywell is that we are not out of compliance with state.
So, so there's not some sort of artificial deadline of, oh, gosh, we're out of compliance. We better get moving because we are not doing what we're supposed to be doing. This is more, this is a self, this is a self, what's the word for it? Self-assigned task of improvement to get as good as we can be. This is not, oops, we need to get back in compliance. It's really good to hear that because I know at the beginning of this process, people thought, there was sort of an allegation that the district was not doing what it was supposed to be doing. And it sounds like that, in, in fact, we were doing what we were supposed to be doing. We were doing what we said we could be, in fact, we were doing what we said we were doing. It just wasn't always having the successful results we hoped for. So, this is just a process, part of our process of continual improvement.
And to respond to that, yes, indeed. Like I said, you know, we asked a lot of questions of legal. And again, it appears that we're in legal compliance. However, they also emphasize that the way that we're carrying things out has contributed to challenges. And I'd like to respectfully say, when I hear about equity, I am 100%, 100% aligned to that. That is important. And hearing about the community and getting their feedback is critically important. Please understand that and I think that everybody in the task force feels that. I also will say though, as the educator sitting here, excuse me, this has been a topic of debate, as the teacher, the classroom teacher sitting here, there is urgency behind this. And balancing the different factors, making sure that there is real and meaningful community feedback, that is critical. I 100% agree with that and I hope that the process can be amended. What's laid out here is based on what we were, we were given.
We were working on a target.
Exactly.
Yes.
But I hope that that happens. In terms of making sure it's aligned with equity, 100%. But I cannot emphasize enough that this is of urgent nature. And so, I'm asking, please, that we as a community come together to address these issues. And I thank you. I definitely thank all of you because I'm hearing thoughtful questions. I really do appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just first go, colleagues, to Mr. Yagelski. Do you have your mic on? Did you want to speak on something?
I was going to let that finish it in.
Oh, well, before I take any more board questions, you are up next if you're ready.
Yeah, I am.
Okay.
Yes. I, I believe that we have the right group of people doing the job and we need to listen to them about what next steps ought to be taken and give them, empower them to do that. It's a power group, powerful group. And it's interesting too that State Education Department has been watching us carefully along the way. Not because they don't trust us. They're looking for us to help them. And we ought to take advantage of that. Give them all the time and resources we need to move it. But we do have to move it quickly.
We do, yeah. And, and I will say, I think at the same time, it may have felt a bit of a pressure from SED coming into the mix. So, you know, it's a little balanced, but I think we're moving. Before taking on a couple of questions, I think that, here's the question. How, do you have a recommendation now or a revised timeline? If you don't have that sort of mix in your head, if you could come forward with that as soon as possible, I think that would be what's needed to make sure that we get to our end goal and that is to have this, this piece all together, okay? I'm just, so, all right. And Ms. Savage, go ahead.
So, that's, that's really the point I was going to go to actually, which is twofold. One, as Ms. Bechtel said, a lot of what's here is not policy, it's practice. You don't need to wait for the policy committee, you don't need to wait for the board. You can do that tomorrow. Has nothing to do with us. That has to do with things that were implemented at the building level and at the district level. So, that, of all of these pages of recommendations, I believe two say policy at the top. Maybe three? I've, I've lost count. But the, the bulk of them, two, thank you, with my, my counting. I'll go back to my counting practice. So, two pages of policy and then about six or seven changes of practice. So, those changes of practice are not dependent on the board's policy committee process. So, that number one, those, so that sense of urgency is there. Number two, and I, I hope you will not take this the wrong way. We knew when the end of the school year was a long time ago. We knew we wanted to get community feedback a long time ago. We could have put these dates on the calendar a long time ago and still done them on this timeframe. But we didn't. And it's not fair to parents and community members to say, we didn't think ahead, so therefore you have to change your schedule and make yourself crazy. That is not, those two things are not compatible with each other. This is our failure to plan that caused this short timeframe, not the actual deadline, right? If we had decided at the beginning of this process, when we first started talking about it, okay, here's what we're going to do, we're going to do it in this timeframe and then we're going to have the parent and community feedback in May 9th. We could have announced that on February 9th. We chose not to do that, well, maybe not February.
Yeah, I, I think that's a little over. We gave them targets to begin with and they worked towards those targets. It became obvious that we would have to make adjustments to it, knowing full well that we were planning on doing something in the community. And we didn't want to be in a position where we nail a date to do it with the community and then we didn't finish in time.
I hear you. I hear you, but we have to be fair on both sides, right?
More important to get the work done than it is.
So, Mr. Aminyawi and then I want to finish up. Go ahead.
So, looking at the school tool data findings, school year 2018, 19 to 21, where lists courses out. So, I want to go backwards. When this was initially brought up, I said something and I still stand by it, that I would rather have our kids in school than on the street, period. And I stand by that. So, we have to strike a balance. But I also agree with the urgency factor because if you look at the trend, the trend is not good. It's not good. So, I would estimate that marking period one for next year, we would probably start around 3,200 or 3,300. And it's going to go up from there until it reaches a max and it's going to level off because then you're going to have kids that are fine with it and kids that are not fine with it. So, clearly, the trend is not good. It's, as Vice President Savage said, if there is a policy aspect to this, then it reaches our level. If it is an instructional, you know, situation or problem, you know, let us know what we could do to help. But otherwise, if it falls into that category, we're going to rely on you guys to do what you think is right. And if, if I'm making myself clear, we want that number to go down. So, that's what I've got to say. It is an urgent matter. We don't want it to go further up. It's around 30% as of last period for 2022. Who knows what it was like this year?
Thank you. If, if I might, I think the other piece for me too is, you know, we have, we have as a board, as a, as a school community, been concerned about low participation of underrepresented groups in advanced placement in IB and other courses. So, I'm just acknowledging that I agree that, you know, the trends don't look good, but it also impacts everything else that we're, we're attempting to do. So, so there is urgency in making sure that we, you know, get this information, get it right, get the right understanding and figure out the pieces. So, I'm, I really do want to suggest if we can, can you give us a date by which you could have a revised timeline that rolls us out to the finished product, including incorporating public comment or comments from our diverse community?
I think that if I have the opportunity, which of course I will, to meet with these co-facilitators and discuss that the board is okay if we just slow things down a little bit in order to get that feedback that we need, that we can certainly come up with a timeline that takes us through, you know, June 22nd in terms of that outreach. In terms of policy, we would have to talk through how that might look and also speak to the superintendent to determine how he would like us to go forward.
Could I make a suggestion? And I'm a little, I'm going back to what Ms. Savage suggested. If it feels like policy is going to get in the way of not, or of taking away from the time we need to get the act, the work finished and the communication out to community and their feedback, then, I'm sorry, I may be wrong, but I'm, would like to say, don't worry about that piece at the moment. I mean, you've got, we've got bigger things, I think, on the table for you to finish up and, and input to get back. So, I, I guess.
I think, I think maybe as, as Karen works through the, the project plan between now and the end of the year, that that's a conversation she can have with Dr. Tatur about rescheduling policy, having an extra policy, whatever it takes. And we, this obviously has to be, get done. And the other piece I wanted to ask about was, from the teacher's perspective, doesn't this impact the syllabus? I know we've gone a long way in making sure, and I appreciate all the work you all have done. I know that five years ago, I used to hear a lot of complaints from secondary parents about the fact that there were not clear syllabuses and now there are, right? It's a dramatic noticeable difference from a student perspective. But that means teachers are going to have to restructure their syllabuses. So, there has to be time for that too, which I imagine you're thinking through how that all flows.
So, great. So, as soon as you can kind of do that, thank you for putting time into that schedule.
We will take the time to look at the time we have and see what it is that we can accomplish in that period. We do want to be smart about what we're doing. We want to keep in our mind that we, our goal here is to incentivize kids. I'd also like to point out that the 21, 22 date, I appreciate what you were saying, but remember that's our first year back after the 2021 COVID year where so much of the year was not in school. So, I, my hope is, is that the data that we collected from that year may be a bit of a bump and then we'll see more normalcy this year, but we will see how that goes. So, we can certainly put together something after we convene and discuss and work with the superintendent and relay that plan through the school board update and, and then come back again when we have more information for you.
Okay. Very good. Anything else, folks? One final, sorry. Yes, Ms. Mann and then Ms. Savage and then we'll close out.
You know, at a time when there's only so many hours in a day, I certainly appreciate the work of the task force and taking on something that, you know, the concern presented. you know, the concern presented itself, and all of a sudden, you know, it hit the news and the newspaper, and there's all this negativity. So, I, I want to be clear, and I, I'm not going to speak on behalf of my colleagues, but I am kind of speaking on behalf of my colleagues. We want to do everything that we can to raise the excellence of, of our student body and their academic experience. And, and so I, I just, I would like to say that I sincerely appreciate the time that you've taken to pull together data and to make the recommendations, and I also appreciate revised timelines, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Savage.
That was such a beautiful statement. I wish I'd gone first, because mine is a much more mundane question, which is, why did, why are we only looking at 21-22 numbers here? Why are we not looking at the 2022-23, right? That's the year we're in, right, 22-23?
Because it's not complete.
But first, second, and third quarter, we would know how many, right? That, that date is available. Yes, I know that the fourth quarter hasn't happened, but the first, second, and third quarters have happened, right?
But a lot of the data and a lot of the things we looked at are contingent upon end-of-year grades being changed and things of that nature.
I was just talking about the chart that, that Mr. Eli Maniawi was particularly noticing, and because I think all of us noticed that each quarter is up by six or seven percent since the corresponding quarter several years ago. And Ms. Bechtel is saying, "Oh, I really hope that we're going to see improvement now that we're coming back." And I, there, we, we actually have that data, we just don't have it in front of us. So, that, if it's possible to add that, and if that's just a, love my Patricia Wolf, like click the button thing, like if she can do that, because she's already wrote the code to do it for the first, maybe, maybe that's not a heavy lift to get this year's data for the first three quarters.
Okay, thank you all for taking a look at that. Okay, so I think that we are, one again, thank the entire task force and you all in particular for your leadership and work on this. Not easy, not fun, but it's going to help us in the long run and to help our students mainly. So, thank you, and we look forward to hearing from you, yes.
And they did this while still taking care of all of their primary responsibilities. So, we owe them a whole lot of thanks.
Thank you. Thank you again, okay, appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen. I'm staying here because I have a presentation.
Yeah, I was, Ms. Bechtel, I was just getting ready to say that you're still on, don't go anywhere. Okay, thank you.
I believe that my colleague Jennifer Justice was joining us online. I hope she made it in. Jen, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Oh, awesome, welcome.
Thanks.
Okay, so we'll change the intensity of the conversation a little bit and talk about my wonderful division, where I can speak to so many great and positive things that are happening in curriculum instruction and professional development. We ground everything in the vision, mission, and goals. Our work is connected in that manner. And in fact, if we go to this next page up, the Division Goals, you'll see the threads of this throughout this presentation. So, my major goals are really around instructional supervision, curriculum development and implementation, and professional development. And then all the subcategories of, of that instructional supervision is about the leaders. It's also about instructional coaching for my department. And really, that targeted focus on the professional learning communities that take place in the Common Planning Time and our role in this division on that. Our curriculum development and implementation, we, as you know, we have a plan, we have the cycle of review that really grounds that entire process and has made it so managed, much more manageable. And that includes also the implementation of new and our phased-in standards, and innovative programming, digital tools, PD, our PD days, professional development. And I include here the mentor program and student teaching, because they too are really, they're forms of professional development as well. This is my staff. I have the four secondary core supervisors in the content areas, and every content is represented here. The elementary supervisors, they're divided more to STEM and Humanities. We have the K-12 supervisors, that includes Kate Wright, our fabulous Fine Arts Supervisor, and John Galarno in charge of PE and Health. Ashley Chapel is here as well. I will make a note that while I supervise athletics, I don't have a strong update about athletics. It's just way too large and needs its own space to, to show all of the facets of that. So, that will not be included in tonight's presentation. Then mentoring in PD and my right-hand lady here, Jen Justice, is here to talk us through some of that. And Lisa DiNardo is my Admin Assistant, and I, I just have to tell you, I rely on Lisa so much. She's such a great asset to our department and provides us with an incredible level of support. So, and much like Lori and Cecily, we really have worked together over the years to set up structures for supervision the same. So, I too get out there to, in check-in meetings with my supervisors, and we have a set agenda where we go through ML, their, their own MLPR goals and their, their APPR caseloads, but a lot. And then that coaching and direction and guidance, which is so important for our leaders. And, and we talk about those instructional things, the walkthrough, CPT status, those trends, and then just the day-to-day logistics of running the departments, my items, their items. And so, we have those meetings, and then we have a secondary core meeting with a little bit of a larger group and the elementary core monthly meeting as well. So, those are kind of our meeting structures to get the job done. Next is, okay, yes. So, the supervisors themselves have huge responsibility around instruction. That's their, they are content people, they're instructional people. They attend all the, the Albany High meetings and the elementary and middle school principal meetings. They do a ton of walkthroughs, classroom visits. They pair with the building leaders or they do those individually. That is their work getting into the classrooms. Instructional coaching, we have that under our purview in the department as well. And our instructional coaches support CPT at all levels and, you know, around curriculum revision, PD, data analysis, instructional planning. And then we are looking for, I've done a little coach PD myself as we have new folks come on. I have a syllabus to go through, and I really enjoy doing that work with mainly the elementary coaches. That's where we had new staff. But we are, as a result of some of the recovery money, going to have our coaches be in a more formal conference in the fall with, oh, I, the man's name escapes me, but the guru of instructional coaching. So, I'm pretty excited about that possibility. We have a lot of coaches at the elementary level. I have two supervisors, but I don't know the exact number. It might be like 18 coaches at the elementary level. And so, those coaches are our two elementary administrators. They're, they're tied to the 12 buildings, it's such a broad spectrum of buildings. So, that's how that structure works. At the secondary level, the content supervisors are, there's only three, three coaches, and they are working, plus the data coach and the tech coaches that report to Kent's office. So, they do their work a little bit differently, and they're scheduling themselves into Common Planning Time. Elementary only has Common Planning Time once a week. Your secondary folks, it's four times a week. So, the structures are a little bit different of how that instructional support goes, but it works, it works well on, on both levels. So, that's that. Walk-throughs and classroom visits. I know that Ms. McKenna and Dr. Wilson Turner spoke about this. We really had a transformation this year with the classroom visits. We, the, the walkthroughs were bulky. They, they take, they take a lot of time and they, they're a very structured process. The classroom visits were really an attempt to just say, "Just go, let's get in. Let's just get in and leave that post-it note, that friendly note, and really get to know the trends." And I know that Cecily and Lori talked about how that has been such a great process for them this year, because our, all our leaders are in classrooms more, and they can pick up those trends and, and see those things more clearly than we, than we were always having this, this long walkthrough process. So, we do quite a bit of that. And then I think I wanted to let you know on the bottom of this one, all of this, all of that, those trends inform our professional development planning, informs the SEP process. And my supervisors have conducted 877 classroom, formal classroom visits in the system and 165 walkthroughs to date when, you know, I took this data a few weeks ago. So, they are in those classrooms. Our curriculum implementation, we have the Math and World Language. We'll be bringing you a presentation in June about their work as in their year one of the cycle of review. We also added in the last cycle process the K-12 Reading Program. But the ladies and I have, and that's Elizabeth Morphy at Elementary and Jen Hulahan at Secondary, really talked through that while there's some curriculum, it's really more programmed. So, you're going to see a different structure, because you, you can't have like a straight curriculum. You have to have something that's in response to the children's needs as they are presenting those needs in, in reading. So, it's a little bit, we're going to do a little bit of a different thing, and we don't have a date on the calendar yet, but I was hoping for an August meeting. And that's for Ms. Smith and the Superintendent to determine. Next year, Physical Education and Health and, and, you know, just everybody else is the ongoing revision in curriculum and response to implementation. We have the new and phased-in standards implementation. I, I don't think I've given you this information in the past, but I, I thought it was interesting, because we have Computer Science, which is a little quicker. So, this initial implementation for next year and then full, 24-25. And we're well on our way to having that ready to go. The secondary, we have it in place in some cases, because they're in, in their courses. At the elementary, we've done a crosswalk with both the Math and ELA standards to see where that natural fit is. And we're working with the librarians to talk about some of the, even just that word processing piece. Science, the full implementation, full implementation of the next-gen science standards for grades five and eight is next year. Full won't be until really June of '26, I think is the last of the new science exams. So, that's kind of when you're done, when all the rollout of the exams are here. And then World Language also is just engaging in that raising awareness, that phase-one stage, with the full implementation, the tests changing for that June of 2029. So, that's a long way out. I do appreciate State Ed, you know, after the, the Common Core implementation of 2011, 2012, 2013 was rough, you know? And we all learned some lessons about how this has to be a staged and phased-in process. And I didn't know, Jeddah, would you be able to click on that NISID link and get back to it? I, I just thought it'd be interesting for the Board. I love this page. The State Ed has done a nice job with creating a great page. If you just scroll down a little bit, see, there, there's all your content areas, and you click in, and it, there's just such an incredible wealth of information. I mean, I have this page is in my back pocket. So, thanks, Jeddah, I appreciate it. So, then back to this. And then, of course, our, we have our STEM initiatives, the Seal of Civic Readiness, the Integrated Instructional Technology, those are all a part of my work. And then, next one. I know that the Board wants to know how we are actually embedding the social justice themes into our curriculum. And I know I told this story before, that in the humanities, it's, it's natural, and it has been natural for a very long time, especially with, under the leadership of Jen Hulahan. It's passionate about this. We had the 1619 Project come up, and the same kind of passion about that occurred in history. Where, where the struggle was, it's like, where, how else are we promoting social justice? And that's that first bullet, that amplifying student voice through the lens of social justice, justice. And that's where we get sort of cross-curricular, like just allowing our students to talk. And even in math, we have math talks and that kind of learning, so. And then we've got the Seal of Civic Readiness projects in grade 12. Last year was our fledgling year, and this year, it's gone, it's stronger, it's better. So, we are working with our community-based organizations on those, so. Next. The views, I put this up a little bit differently so that we could see, but I realize that I have percentages and not numbers. They're very much alike, the views. This is really to show that our, this is our secondary staff, that the Rubicon Atlas is a successful platform for us to hold our curriculum. Teachers use it, they get in there. And sometimes, you know, you might see a little bit of variance, because somebody maybe is doing new standards or whatever, but largely, those pies kind of look the same, so. So, we'll move on. Professional development, we have our, our goals, which are deeply aligned to the SEPs, the DCEP, and our, even our district goals. And then the professional development days, we did the half-days. I will say, when you look at the survey data on the next page, you'll see, they weren't, the, the half-days, we, our numbers were a little bit lower, especially in that October 20th. And I think the teachers struggled a little bit, because the other half of the day, they were meeting with their parents, and they were focused on their parents. And, but we know we don't want to send kids home on a half-day. So, this was the, the way that we've figured it out, and we will do this again next year. So, we'll, we'll take more data and see where it, where it comes. And on the slide before, I, actually, I'll just tell you, Jeddah, you don't have to go back, but we had, we've scheduled 271 conferences for, in 22-23. And we did, we had 221-22, but again, we weren't traveling, and now we're getting back into it. And Lisa DiNardo in my office works with Advantage Travel, who is the district's travel person, travel agency that we work with. And she really does a fabulous job. I mean, she could probably go get a job in that, but I try not to tell her that, because I want to keep her. But she does good work there, so. And then, I think, the survey data, you could look at your leisure, pretty typical. And then I, we are on the Mentor Program, so I'm going to turn it over to Jen to speak for a few minutes on this.
So, as you know, the Mentor Program, this is, all, this transitions new colleagues into the district. This includes people that have 12 years of experience or people that are coming in at, say, 22, that just got out of student teaching. And so, obviously, the level of need is different, but we provide that. It's something that I'm really proud of. A lot of districts don't provide that support, and I think it, it is something that is really needed in a, a community and a district as large as ours. This is a professional community. The Mentor and the Mentee meet an hour a week to have discussions, meaningful discussions about curriculum, classroom management, everything. We try to train our mentors, although we do have some that aren't trained. I do, we, we're planning on having two trainings over the summer, and of course, those are voluntary trainings. We use the evaluation system to try to get the teachers prepared for their evaluation, talking to them about what the rubrics are. And obviously, the whole purpose of the program is to retain highly qualified teachers. And the mentors do get a stipend. If you look at this graphic, I think, thanks, Jeddah, it's a big jump from 20- If you look at this graphic, I think, thanks, Jeddah, it's a big jump from 2021 when obviously things were a lot different. We were teaching from home and we didn't have a lot of new teachers. So you can see the numbers are rising. We're adding positions and we do have some turnover. And we're trying to target the reasons why, obviously, and, and to get qualified people in and fill the positions as quickly as we can. Karen, do you want me to talk about this one too?
Yes, please.
So we've been working, there are a few things that, that I think, I, I work pretty closely with HR, trying to help people with their certification. As you know, the state ed process is really cumbersome and a lot of people don't even know where to begin. So they start the process without creating a teacher count, which is really the clearinghouse for all the documents. And so if you do things backwards, that can, you know, make things more difficult and more time-consuming. I work with current teaching assistants and teachers and substitute teachers, reaching out to some community members as well that are seeking teacher certification, looking at pathways to do that. Karen and Amanda Powers and Frank Delta-Gior and I, they had a meeting at Albany High to see if there were community members that were interested in maybe becoming CTE certified because we obviously have some vacancies in, in that area and things have changed with the middle school curriculum. And we did have a number of people come to that meeting and, you know, talk to them about different ways to get certified. I talked to a lot of people about this, maybe you own a business and you decide that you'd like to do something different. I also manage four apps to the Talat Grant, which is Take a Look at Teaching. And this, it was fostered by NICE Ed, who gave us the money and said, listen, we really need to create a teacher pipeline. We need to start with kids. So we tried a couple of different, we, we wanted to create a middle school pathway and have two middle school or three middle school teams. That sort of disintegrated because of frankly, lack of interest. It, it's very difficult to get kids excited about teaching at this time. So we kind of scrapped that and decided what would be a better way to do this. And we decided to focus on high school. So we ran three field trips. We went to SUNY Oneonta, we went to St. Rose on a walking field trip, and we also went out to SUNY Albany. And we were lucky enough to have community partners. So we had Elevate 518 that paid for the lunches for us to go to Oneonta, but the ABSSA grant paid for the bus. So we worked together. We've, we also, I'd like to give a shout out to Leroy Johnson, who is a first grade teacher at Giffen. He went to Oneonta with me and also out to SUNY Albany on a Friday night to meet with some of the school, the kids in grad school out there, see if they want to sub. You know, they finished school in May, they can come work for us and get a jump on teaching and hopefully work for us. So we've been doing lots of outreach, trying to drum up business, if you will. People, you know, are you interested in teaching? Hey, we might have a job for you. You can start as a TA, you can have tuition reimbursement. So we're working on all of those things and obviously we're trying to promote teaching as a career. And not just teaching too, we, we, when we went to SUNY Albany, we spoke with the School of Social Welfare and so, just talking about social workers and school psychologists because obviously we need staff in schools. And a large focus of the grant is obviously to increase people of color in our teaching staff. And so the group that we met with at SUNY Albany at night is a minority group. Dr. Tammy Ellis, and I can't even think, I don't know what the title of the group is, but we've met with all of the kids in grad school that she meets with once a month. And we're, we're really trying to get teachers of color. And so we're working on that.
This is an area of passion for Jen, as you can tell, because she, she herself came up through an alternative pathway and she's very interested in tapping into the expertise in our TA population. And Jen's run some workshops, even on PD days, and she'll do something, it's sort of an open forum because everybody's situation is so different. But she has connections with folks at SED in that office. So anytime she gets stuck on a question, she, she knows who to call. So we're very fortunate to have her in our, in our district and I'm happy to have her in my office. Our other responsibilities, we've, the student teaching program, we do that. We've only had 65 placements. It is up from 55, but it's not as, as robust as it, as it once was. I will say, it does seem like the colleges are starting to rev up, which has been good. And we've had some asks from different colleges, like for example, SUNY Oneonta, all of a sudden is looking for placements. And I said, yes, you know, let's, let's not, let's go outside of where we normally go. And then some of the online programs, which I will work, I will work with too. So we, we are trying to open those, those, those up. And then we, I implement grants. So the Smart Scholars Grant is, is still with me and Title IV, the Well-rounded Education. These are the grants that fund the, the music and art program in the summer. And then also the STEManistas, which as a, you know, as, you know that Sarah McGraw started that several years ago with the younger girls. And now Amanda Powers will be in year two. She did it for the first time last year at the high school or at the secondary level. And she does that right on the Albany High campus and the kids really respond well. The Fine Arts Programming, can't speak enough about Kate and her ability to put on an event, those concerts, art shows. And tomorrow is at the Albany History and Art, the Museum of History and Art, which I'll be there and I think the superintendent will be there with me. And to showcase our elementary art program. And then we had the whole program down at the Empire State Plaza. So really good work there and we, we see the kids that are getting award after award. So it's wonderful. And the STEM programming. Oh, here's some nice news about the science fair. I know for years, we've been trying to get that back up, off the ground. Now COVID kind of set us back, but Amanda was, Powers was able to, is doing that with the grade six and seven. Every student participated in the science fair activity this, this year in grade six and seven, which was exciting. Eight, I think we had them focus on the ISS, which is the International Space Station Experiment. So that was their thing. I think that was the thinking. And then we have strong partner with Radix. Sarah, they live in each other's pocket and have developed a wonderful partnership. And then of course, you know, I do district calendar. Such a joy and pleasure. And, and I always appreciate Ms. Mann telling me that she makes it, what did you say? Want to pull your eye? And then athletics. And as I said, I, I couldn't be fair to athletics by putting up a little slide. So we will have to figure out a way to showcase our athletics program in a different venue than this. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Bechtel. Questions? Mr. Almeyali?
It's actually a comment. Thank you. And especially for that little bit about the science fair. I just wanted to comment that ASH had fourth and fifth grade science fair today. Really great projects, everything from like studying plants and fonts and, you know, all kinds of awesome stuff, but really good job. Thank you.
And that's, Sarah's been at that work for many years, but we had a little gap in the middle level. And so I'm very, very pleased that we've pulled that, we're pulling that into, into that. That vertical articulation is really great. K-12, yeah.
Anyone else? Ms. Kraschik?
I just had a couple of, I just had a really brief question about the pie charts on curriculum implementation. And those represent the views from within Albany, Albany schools users, right?
The seven, or six through 12 use Rubicon Atlas. And I'm sorry, I don't have the numbers. If, if it were interactive, you'd be able to press the pie. I didn't realize that. And the number would show up. I, I forget it's, I forget, and I had it in another chart. It's thousands of, of views that staff make. And it's, it stays pretty much the same, but I think it speaks to that everybody is using the tool.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Ms. Savage?
I just wanted to take a moment to talk just a little bit about professional development, even though I don't actually have a question. It's more of a comment about how critical that is and how much I appreciate the significant effort that goes into that entire project, which is just, I know you've said this before. I don't remember if you said this tonight, but you know, multiple weddings a year.
That's right.
Is, is, is not a, and it's, it's an unbelievable amount of work to put those things together. But really, that's what lets us get better. Right? You know, that's what allows us to take our teachers, who are all fantastic and well-meeting, and give them the tools to make more progress with our kids and to help our ABSSU members be more successful in everything they do to make sure that our schools are successful. So I just, I just really honor the work that's done around professional development because without success for our teachers and our staff, we don't have success for our kids. So it's more of a comment than anything else.
Thank you, Ann. I do want to give a shout out on, to Jen on that too. We work as, we're strong partners on that. And she does a ton of legwork with staff and rallying folks, the diff, our different people that come in. So we, we definitely work as a team to get that off the ground.
That's great. Thank you. Dr. Shatur?
Just to comment, I mean, many moons ago, I raised the question about why don't we have science fair in middle school? So, you know, I'm so happy we, we're getting back to it.
Yes.
You know, and our kids have gone out, the elementary kids and, and high school kids have gone out to the Johnson, Henry Johnson Fair.
Yeah, the Henry Johnson.
And won awards there. So it's like, why is this gap here?
Yes. We're back in the game.
Okay, colleagues, anything else? Ms. Bechtel and Ms. Justice, we thank you so much for joining us tonight and for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure.
That brings us actually up to board committee reports. I'll start. The Facilities Committee was scheduled to meet on May 9th. We were, are going to move that to May 10th. So same time, same location. It's 5:45 here at HG. And we do also know that the Tuesday, there are bids coming in on the phase, phase four pieces. So they don't come in until late that afternoon, but we are going to be looking at those on Wednesday. So that also means that we have a virtual budget committee or community presentation. So I am not going to be at that one, but Mr. Karas can lead off. If there is a board colleague who's available on the 10th, please let me know. But we have not had, I'm hoping that there may be a few more people, but it's been a low turnout on those, although our presentations with specific groups, neighborhoods, associations and NAACP, et cetera, have been quite, quite good, good attendance on that and very good questions as well. So let me know if anyone has some availability on the table.
Ironically, I'm hesitant to commit because it's the Myers Science Fair.
Oh.
I'm hesitant to commit to that night.
Okay, that's all right. We'll see what we can do. Okay. Next committee, yes, Ms. Kraschik?
I might be willing to be helpful, but I'm already, I actually already have a meeting scheduled with somebody else for 5:00 PM on Wednesday, the 10th.
No worries. Thank you.
I'll leave tomorrow for a conference and I won't be back in time for the meeting.
Yep. And we really don't have to go down the line. We'll be okay. Mr. Karas will be okay if not. Okay, but I, but let me know, you know, if, if that changes for any reason. Okay. Did, next committee report, I'm just looking down at, can I just, let's see. Ellen, do you have anything? I know you guys have a meeting.
Nope, we, we did have that, we did have that report. We do have another meeting.
Okay.
And I believe that will be the 15th.
Okay, yes. Okay, and go ahead, Dr. Shatur.
So policy typically does not meet in May, but because of the timeframe and everything, code of conduct is being discussed. We have a special meeting on the 25th of May. And so code of conduct and other policies that have to move with the code of conduct are all going to be discussed during that. So that will be coming to the board. There'll be a public hearing and all that stuff. And then June 5th is our June meeting for the policy.
Okay, government relations?
We have a state budget.
What do you mean, we're not getting started on next year's?
We will be picking up the ball on child safety zones, which we were told were coming soon. So I'm hoping soon means, you know, shortly after the budget passed. So I plan to start being my persistent self on that topic again relatively soon. And then we will also be moving forward, oh gosh, I just realized, I meant to send you this quite a while ago for the NISBA, how we get our resolutions adopted by NISBA. So that was, I dropped that ball completely, but I will pick it back up again. Sorry, Tabith, I know you were interested in that in particular, so I will send that. So that cycle starts again so that we can meet as a government relations committee and review the potential NISBA resolutions and move them forward. Mr. Lusko has something to add. Hooray. Thank you, Mr. Lusko.
I just wanted to note that while all that forward-looking, all those forward-looking things are true, we also noticed in the budget that that million dollars in our-ish in our charter school transition aid is still not there. So we're going to keep, we'll keep on top of that as, as the spring moves on.
Yeah, I think, I think it's not till the May numbers. Is that right?
So they're waiting to finalize the enrollment to update that list.
Yeah, I think, I think what, what Jennifer Pyle found out when she dug into this was that, and that's Jennifer Pyle from the Conference of Big Five Schools, is that the next time they update that is based on the May beds thing, beds numbers. And so that would be the next time we would know. But it should still give us, so that, we are still likely under-reporting our state aid on the state aid runs by in the vein of a million dollars or more. I don't want to say how much more because it really depends on how many students there are this year in charter schools.
One additional comment on the, the final state aid, they took out that set aside, large set aside that was there. So it's free to do as we want.
Yeah, no, no carve-out for high stakes tutoring, even though, or high-impact tutoring, even though of course, we offer tutoring in most of our schools or most of the time in all of our schools. So it's not like we're not doing tutoring. We're just free to spend the money as we see is appropriate.
I'm not going to do Roz from Monsters, Inc., but we'll be watching that charter thing as it goes forward.
Thank you, Mr. Lusko. Okay. I think, did I get all the reports? I think so. Who'd I miss? No, I think we did. Okay. Very good. The, oh, I did facilities, yeah. Hmm? Okay. So we, let's move on to other business then. And Ms. Savage?
I just wanted to report that I went to the NISBA policy workshop on the new, what I think of as the 50-yard line prayer case. So that was a very interesting workshop and how it's going to, what kinds of policies we are going to have to change in order to handle that Supreme Court decision. And one of the things it turned on was whether, if, if, if the person was praying during a private moment, is that different than his colleague being allowed to make a personal phone call? So that was an interesting way that they, the Supreme Court interpreted what was going on, that, you know, are you on duty? If you're on duty, you should not be doing anything personal. And if you're free to make a personal phone call, you're also free to make a personal prayer. I am not the Supreme Court. This would not have been my ruling. I see people looking quizzical over there. Anybody who knows me knows where my politics are on this, but that, I don't get to make these rules. Sadly, the Supreme Court is in charge of this. So we will, there will be some policy changes coming down the pike as a result of that Supreme Court change.
Any other business? Okay. If not, I would, oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to add something I should have added earlier. This Saturday, we're having a big job fair at the high school. And the ads are out for that and we're all geared up for that. And we certainly got a lot of positions looking for.
That's right. That's, that's an important one. And I think we, I know we've mentioned it, that some of those budget, at least one of those budget meetings, but yes. So thank you for that reminder. Job fair. Okay. Anything else, colleagues? Okay. If not, I would like to entertain a motion to return, back to exec session.